All right. I call this North National E S D Board of Directors work session to order. And I turn it over to the superintendent for a nice welcome this morning. And I thank you all for being here and I apologize to those of you that I gave incorrect information of where we were and that but we're all here and glorious day on the Oregon coast and so over, over to you, Dan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and it's good to see everybody together like squad. It's, it's really nice. Hope people been having a good summer and enjoying some things. It is a, it's been a busy summer for the E S D, I would say, or at least for me. One thing that I didn't really appreciate when I was in a school district setting is early learning has no end like there. So we've got summer sessions going and the littles are up and about and our staff are, a lot of our staff are hard at work with kids. So yesterday I had our cabinet treat, uh, team retreat. I've got to stop calling it that because it's really just a long work session like this. But it was really good to be with, with a really solid group of professionals working through some, some of our planning for the year. And we started our meeting just with a opportunity for us to just share what's on top for us. Like, you know, this is a public board meeting, right? So we're being recorded and just want to remind people of that. But we don't often just get together and have a moment as a team to just talk about things that are pressing on us when we think about the work here at the E S D or your professional life or your personal life and how you show up as leaders in different spaces. So I thought we could just maybe take a second, just talk quickly about what's on top for you this summer. And, and then I do want to quickly turn K S into talking about like, you know, why, why the E S D? Like, why is it that you all have chosen to take these high paying jobs as board members? And the E S D and why you show up in spaces like this? So with that, I will just quickly start and send you all an email about things that are going on with me and my family. And I would be lying if I didn't say that's right on top. Yeah, so I'm, I'm dealing through that stuff. And I am really excited for the year. It's like a weird, weird deal for me. I usually take a little bit of time off and then I recharge. I do something outside and then come back and kind of get ready for the year and I get pretty pumped up. Because I really believe in what we do. I have not had that recharge moment this summer. And yeah, things are tough in my, in my world right now. So that's on top for me, but I said to my staff yesterday, Alfred Adler, you know, one of the fathers of psychology, you know, Western thought or whatever. He was really the father of social psychology and he said, to live a full life, you need, you truly need three legs of us, of a, of a stool. One is, and remember it's Victorian times, right? So one is love and marriage, but love. You need relationships and a social relationships and you need work that matters. And for me, like I know people have like said, you just got to stop and you got to go home. Work that matters, matters to me. And I felt great after yesterday being with my team and talking about things that matter to other people. And it also sucks. So that's what's on top for me this morning. And I appreciate all the notes and really do. So who'd like to share what's up top?
Well, may I offer a comment before we go into our own lives? I just want to express a lot of gratitude for your vulnerability and the way that you're leading with emotion. I think that that's particularly challenging to do. So just thank you for showing up in the way that felt the most authentic to what your needs are. We would have supported you being here today or not. So just know that we all profoundly respect you and appreciate you. We know any, any death in the family is profoundly challenging and you have all of our support and condolences.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Got to be some better things going on this summer for people.
The, the question that we're answering is just what's
Just what's on top for you, like as you enter this space?
Sir, I just got home last night. And Dan, I mean, to Dorian's point, just really appreciate the, the honesty that connectedness and mine is on a much higher note than currently his experience. And but I, you know, lost my dad about, you know, over 10 years ago, lost my mom a couple of years ago. But I just got back from the reunion that my siblings, myself and our children and for some of my siblings, their grandchildren. And we all come together at Missyanna Schubert's, which is where my brother retired to, one of my brothers. And just five days of being with, my husband's family are here and they're amazing. But with kind of my roots and my core in Indiana, weather was god awful. I'm just gonna say that. Nobody recommends summer in the Midwest East. The humidity was crazy. But I needed that. And you guys are living and breathing all the chaos, the cuts. But every kind of aspect of my service life has been impacted. And I, I, I sit there at a board level, maybe not directly, it's just a pedal. And I'm just pretty much a paddock. And so to spend time with my family, and usually there's drama and this time somehow. We all centered on what mattered. So it was, it was great. And so I'm still kind of feeling that, just gratitude for value, I mean, everybody valued it at that time.
Can you tell me your power of why?
Oh, I didn't
We'll get there. We'll get there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
Or, or are we just going over?
Just if you want to share and just put something in the space, it's, it's low stakes. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's just what's going on for you this summer.
Go next. I'm still, I'm in a moment of reflection in a lot of ways and I think I need to take some time to journal and write this summer. I just turned thirty. I completed, this is my first year in public office and just hit the anniversary on this board. And actually, yesterday on the dot is my one year anniversary of being the executive director of the only youth focused nonprofit in Washington County, serving homeless youth. And so it's been a whirlwind. Things that are top of mind for me are the executive order that essentially criminalizes homelessness coming out next week and a myriad of other things. Every week has been a different battle. I'm usually a much more planful, long-term strategic thinker. And it's been response mode for almost the entirety of my first year of service, both in this board and leading a nonprofit. And so I have not yet, you know, like you, Dan, planned the P T O, planned the, you know, turn off the cell phone and, you know, all of the distractions time. I'm looking forward to doing that probably in August or September. I think I need to quiet my mind and reflect on what all of the learnings have been. I don't have those to share with you today, but this is also an invitation. Since we're all in person and I've enjoyed getting to know each and every one of you in the short amount of time that I've been serving with you. I would love to sit down for lunch or coffee, whatever guidance, advice, lived experience you want to share. I'm realizing this is much more like a marathon than a sprint. And I'm meaning to try to sprint less if I'm gonna last in both of these professions. So yeah, that's my, my musing and my invitation for connection too. Yeah.
I also entered a new decade. It's not thirty.
You have to be full of twenty.
I look good for forty, thank you. I turned sixty this summer. Although I, I didn't find that too remarkable. Spent some time recently reconnecting with my family. I've not, I, I grew up in Southern Ohio and Eastern Kentucky, left when I was twenty-two. Go back every few years, you know, my family's still back there. But I had a phone call a few months ago with my mom and, and you know, my dad's suffering with dementia and whatever, so I'm, you know, reluctantly went home, but glad I did. Was the, it's interesting when you, you have, many of you may have had family members that, that, you know, have some dementia or lived with that and, and you know, it, it's, there's different directions that can take behavior wise for folks, but that was the most loving and gentle father I had ever had during this trip, which was really nice. If you were sitting next to him, you wanted to hold your hand. He knew me maybe half the time, but at one point he said, what's your name? I said, Paul, I'm your son. He's like, what's your last name? I said, Gerald. He's like, oh, there's some good ones and bad ones. So, you know, and there were, there were a few lucid moments that were kind of fun. So, so, so that was meaningful for me and sort of top of mind. And, and where they live, there's no cell service, no internet. So it was great to be disconnected for a while. Obviously, like Dan and my day job, living with the sort of transitions at the federal level and the impact that has on the work that we do at the community college is, is very top of mind. But staying laser focused on the difference that we make and, and letting all of that stuff happen outside us. But still, you know, community's gotten a little bit smaller, reality's gotten a little bit tighter, but still can do good work and that, that feels good. So I'm disappointed but energized by the, the state of the world. So hopefully we'll just continue to keep plowing forward and make a difference for the, the folks of the community.
I, I was thinking back on our meeting a year ago. When we were sitting here like this at the beach and it was just after there'd been a significant change for the presidential election. And we were discussing how we felt and I remember saying I was cautiously optimistic. Which is about as far from reality as we can get right now. But so that's unfortunately can be top of mind. Actually, I'm, I'm not doing anything this summer, long time retired. My life sort of doesn't change by the season. But I was just telling Maureen and Becky, I, my computers had aged out, let's put it that way. My son convinced me, who's in I T, to become a hundred percent Apple person. So I have new, all these new computers and I've been trying to transition stuff. And one of the things I've been doing is trying to clean up, you know, many decades of email before I transfer all these files. So I've been reading all these old email messages. So it's interesting, people talk about the future, but I've been living in sort of the past. You find some really interesting things. Take my mind away from some of the unpleasantness of the reality. Trying to keep my, my daughter's spirits up. She does evidence-based medicine for the Preventive Services Task Force that are, whatever, with just all the, staff was fired. And she says, this is not the time to have built your career on doing, studying inequities in medicine based on gender and race.
Oh, I hope now is that, I hope that we can support people who are doing that in the face of injustice. Like if I, I would love to pill your kid, like keep pushing on. Like it's so much braver to be in that profession now than ever.
There's still a job. If there's still a job, yeah.
There, there's, there's something else. The, 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 the themes for me this summer seem to be time and caring. One of them that we can't control, the other we can. And so our littles have, two of them have struggled with, these have seizures. These are feverish seizures. So they'll get sick and they'll, and they'll temperature spike real fast. And, and it's really hard to see coming. This past Saturday was our four-year-old's birthday. She turned four. And she was feeling sick. And she couldn't really attend her birthday party. All the kids are playing outside. She couldn't play. And then we put her in bed and cuddled over her. And she got better real fast. She, she, she just slipped throughout the day. She got better. And then on Sunday, her six-year-old sister got sick. And she said, Dad, I feel tired. And we didn't know if she was sick or not. She, she wished for a temperature or anything. So it's okay, well, she'll go ahead and lay down. I laid down in bed with her, cuddled with her. And she's falling asleep. And then she starts like this humming. And then, you know, my, my first thought is that like, maybe she's singing. So I leaned over and looked at her and I felt she had wet her bed. And I looked at her and I put my hand on her and she was stiff. And I grabbed her, picked her up, put her on the ground. She wasn't breathing. So started doing a C P R. And calling my wife to call nine-one-one. Chest compressions with one hand, holding my hand in her mouth to make sure that she doesn't bite her tongue. And, 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 and the chest compressions are working. I can see her nose moving. And then she stops breathing. So I'm like, okay, hold on, she, she might be choking. I flip her over on her side. I am, I am, I'm doing these chest compressions like this and keeping her airway open. The choking stops. Long story short, the ambulance has arrived. I, I, I got to a point where she could breathe on her own. We took, we took her to the hospital. And, and then afterward, she's like, Daddy, did I ride in the ambulance? And I said, Yeah, baby, dude. And time that we invest in each other is important. We can't control it. With the time that we have, we can care. And we have to do a better job caring. There are people in our world, in our country, in our community that are suffering. We can't control how much time we have here, but we can control how much we care. My reminder is with the time you have, care. Care about somebody suffering. Care about somebody who doesn't have it as easy. Even if it's not the worst, even if it's only a little. Just meet the moment with caring. Now it's going to go, it's gonna say that stuff.
Let us know how we can support you and that is okay if that's not today. I'm, I'm like, it's too.
What is she doing now?
Oh, she's, she's running around, eating food at Hotel Gervais.
You, you, you tell her you're treating her.
Well, I can talk, although following that heaviness, I will say that I'm dealing with the status of the world right now by planning trips. And so this last week, I got together with our friends who we normally travel with. And we now have three additional trips over the next two and a half years on the books so that I don't have to think about the, what's going on. And I, like some others here, had a significant birthday this year, but it was more than sixty. Like double plus. And I just don't know how that happened because I am not that old. But I do have a son, my eldest son, many of you know, is autistic. And he is turning forty this year. And I'm like, I don't know how I could have a son that old because I'm not that old. Macular conception. Anyway, but otherwise, on the other hand, I do like Chris. My summers and falls and winters don't change a lot, except that I seem to have so much less time than I had when I was working. Whatever, everybody tells you that in retirement, how did I have time to work? I have no idea. I didn't sleep though. So I, thank you.
Mine is sort of a next steps summer. A lot of you know, my mom died last year. We had the memorial service about two months ago. And basically it was, it was, it was perfect. Basically, it was, she started this thing called the Steiner Society with Steiner cabins on Mount Hood. We held it at the Steiner Church and I was able to tell, you know, the community up there, the, the, you know, they knew the story, but was able to talk to the community and stuff like that. But that sort of memorial service celebration allowed me to sort of, sort of bookmark that and move on from that. She, I, I'm the only son, I'm the only child she had that's still living. And so what ended up happening was her last eight, nine years, she's had Alzheimer's. And it's been the, at times, the very angry, nasty side of that, which is, you know, difficult to deal with. But it's been a summer of, of sort of turning that and realizing, you know, just, you know, going through all the, all the pictures, all the this and that. And it's, it's been a cathartic summer, but it's been sort of what are, what's next? And so like tomorrow, Lori and I are going to be going to Central Oregon and spending six days hiking and fly fishing and stuff like that. And then we have this diner show of the cabin. And then we're immediately the next day flying to Vancouver to see our, boy, he must be forty now, year-old French Rotary Exchange student who's bringing his family over. And so we're going to be meeting up with them and just doing normal stuff and which I haven't done for a long time. And so I'm just looking forward to that. And then I don't know if I've said this to you or not, but we're going to try to spend, mom had a place in Palm Desert and it's a condo down there. So we're going to spend our winter, good portion of our winter down there. So we'll be doing that and new life sort of, so it's, I'm looking forward to it.
You're gonna be joining us remotely all ten.
Well, I can, I can go next. So I, I just want to say I am, I am so humbled by the, the vulnerability of, of this board. As, as a new board member, this is just, I'm just so impressed. Because building relationship is everything for us to make, you know, difficult decisions over the next year, which I anticipate we will have to do. Being able to have that trust and that relationship is going to be foundation. And so just thank you all for your honesty and vulnerability. And it, it gives me a lot of hope that we'll be able to get through some tough times together. So just appreciation there and every, all the hard things that I'm hearing that folks are going through, just knowing what you're showing up with and what you've been dealing with is, is really helpful, you know, to know. So as we work together, we can be kind and caring every step of the way. For me, you know, work has been very challenging. It, it's a test, I think, for all leaders and all, all public servants right now. And I'm constantly reminding our staff that, you know, this is the time that we need to just continue, as Dorian said, to, to push through as hard as it may be, but also to fill our cups. So I'm glad to hear that people are taking vacations when they can. I tried to lead by example and go on vacation. It was something I'd planned a year ago. The timing was not great for, for being gone for almost two weeks this summer during a time when our, our county was making a lot of key decisions. But I went to San Juan, Puerto Rico with my parents and our three adult children. Our three adult children all agreed to go on a family trip. I thought that was amazing. And so we went to San Juan and then we took a cruise down to the Southern Caribbean. My mom is Dutch, so it was really fun for her because they speak Dutch down there. And so it was really fun to be on like little tour buses on islands in the Caribbean. And then my mom's speaking Dutch. It was, it was, it was super cool. So it was really fun and we got some amazing snorkeling in. And it was a great way to, to spend time with family and come back with some really incredible memories. So, and then my daughter's starting law school in just a few weeks down at Willamette University. So that's a big life change and we just moved her down to Salem last weekend. So lots of good things happening and I'm focusing on those amidst some challenging times.
And welcome.
This is the summer of transition for me. I am transitioning more and more out of doing a lot of the things that I did professionally. Still, still have fingers and fundraising and fingers and, but not taking on new clients or new and transitioning more into my volunteer calling. And that volunteer calling seems to be getting everywhere I turn, more and more in-depth in education. And so this summer has been educating me more on education, the different parts of education. And so, but very fortunate in that my grown children, I was able to spend a week with in June. And I used to just take that so for granted when, when they, and then when they get older and they get their own lives and one lives on the East Coast and one lives in California. It's just, you know, we're pretty much down to the holidays now and when we go to see them. So I was in total mom mode of cooking all their favorite foods and doing, you know, seeing their high school friends were walking in the door and, and all that kind of thing. So it really made me happy to start the summer that way. And we do not travel a lot because now that you don't have to based on kids' schedules or whatever. My husband and I like to travel in September and October when the, it gets better. And so there's just so much to experience in Oregon and we've had a delightful summer. And I was, I saw Dorian this week and, and I was sharing because I feel like I cannot control the big picture. I cannot control this big stuff down there. I have zeroed in on day, times of joy. So every day I try to think of something that will bring me joy. And it could be, I love working in my yard and that something has bloomed that I wasn't expecting. I smile and brings it. Yesterday it was a Burger Bill Berry Milkshake. And I enjoyed every single sip of it and it brought me joy and I was happy. And so that's what I'm trying to, is, is when I, when I go to sleep at night, my, you know, what, what brought me joy that day and not to be focusing on all of the things that are out there. But I thank all of you, I, it, again, to look at people and not knowing what they're carrying in their heart or not knowing what they're carrying, that, that you still come, we all come together to do this work together. And that, 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 that right there brings me joy, that right there. So you all, when I go to bed tonight, will be my joy moment. So anyway, I'm so glad we're here today to do this work together. So with that, back to you, Superintendent.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I really do appreciate that this board, we did, last year, we also, we, we typically over these
This board, we did, last year, we also, we, we typically over these work sessions with a little bit, something like that, right? And last year was pretty vulnerable too. And we did talk a lot about our fears and all that kind of stuff. And, uh, and it does help, I think, um, teams, um, trust and lean into one another and be kinder to one another when we know. Um, so I just appreciate we spent more time on that than I had planned. I gotta learn that with our board because our board doesn't say like one sentence, you know? Like, I'm gonna go for it. So, um, I do, uh, want to, we're just gonna be a little bit behind, but we've got plenty of ways to make up time, um, during the day. Um, I do wanna quickly start with this, um, section on our identifying kind of our whys. But we just did a bunch of that a little bit. So when we do the share out, let's just tighten it up a little bit, um, and get more uh, surgical with, um, with our thoughts around why we show up in public ser- service. But, uh, with that, we are going into a strategic planning year. We, we have a big year ahead of us. We have a strategic planning year. We have big bodies of work. We're bargaining wall to wall, every one of our groups. We're doing contract negotiations and by the way, there's this thing called the federal government, which is, um, every week is a new adventure on funding and which program and how, if they're going to release it and, you know, all, all the funds and all that kind of stuff. So it is going to be, it's going to be a big year in the agency. We have a strategic plan and we have done much work over the last really 10 years to identify our purpose, our, what we do, you know, how we approach it. I just wanted to frame up, and Brian's going to come in in a moment. We're going to do some more strategic planning work. Um, I do want to kind of just frame up a little bit about how we organize ourselves. Our mission is a mission about partnership that leads to student success. That is our basic mission, our what, what we do at the E S D. So I am often pulling people together. I mean, we are often at the E S D, the conveners of all kinds of different agencies towards improving student success. That is what we do. We have a set of values that we've identified over time, and this is basically how we approach this work. We approach it with equity at the center. We are approach it with students at the center. We approach it with partnership and innovation at the center of what we do. Our vision is why we do it. We do all these things for one purpose. And that is every student that is in our region needs to be educated, equipped and inspired to achieve their full potential and enrich their communities. That is our organizational why. So all this other stuff like can change in service to this greater purpose, which is student success. And of course, the E S D, we are often the agency that's focused on students that are furthest away from success. So it's a lofty, you know, scenario for us. That is what we do and why we show up. So we'll watch a little video here. This board, it'll be a miracle.
God, I know. People, when they think of a phrase, how do I know? They always want to put the what behind it. How do I know what I'm supposed to do? The question you really should ask is how do I know why I'm here? Because when you know your why, your what becomes more clear and more impactful. If you know, like for instance, um, people know I do comedy, but that's what I do. My why is to inspire people to walk in purpose. So I can do comedy. I can write books. I can be in a movie because all of it is motivated by my why. In fact, I have a new, uh, a new web series out called Michael Junior Break Time. Uh, we probably just did the sixth episode. It's on YouTube. So every single Wednesday at three o'clock, we drop a new episode on YouTube of Michael Jr. Break Time. What it is, it's me, I travel around the country and I do standard comedy, in case you don't know. And in the middle of my comedy set sometime, I'll stop and just talk to my audience. And we've been filming this and it's, you know, it's, it's pretty cool. So we're in Winston-Salem. I'll show you a clip from Winston-Salem. And I'm just talking to this guy in the audience and he tells me that he's a, a musical instructor at a school. So I was like, all right, a musical instructor, you know, can you sing? Let me hear you sing a song. So this is what happened at the last episode of Michael Jr.'s Break Time. So you're a musical director?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, um, let me get a couple, let me get a couple of bars of like, uh, Amazing Grace. He did the first part.
Amazing grace. I'll speak a sound and say the I be.
That rock is singing. Oh, is that? What's your original version is if, uh, your uncle just got a jail, you got shot in the back when you was a kid. I'm saying, let me see the good version real quick. If you know, for the pop, I'll just see if that exists. Just get you got.
I speak the sound. Say it. I'm afraid. Hey.
Okay, um, here's what I want to catch. First time I asked him to sing, he knew what he was doing. The second time, he knew why he was doing it. When you know your why, your what becomes more impactful because you're walking towards or in your purpose.
Who has seen that before, by the way? All right. I mean, I gotta get a new gig, right? Like, but, uh, if you
It gives me chills though.
If you haven't, uh, every time I see it, I'm like, oh, God, that is just, you know, it just strikes, right? Uh, and it makes so much sense. So, uh, knowing your why, right, makes your what more impactful? Because you're walking to or towards your purpose and or towards your purpose. So what is your why? And I just give you a second, um, to jot down something. Like I said, you know, we'll try and tighten it up a little bit, but you know, you're on this board, right? Like this is a weird, this is an interesting board to be on. Um, it is not a school district. It is not the state department. We do a lot. We're super varied at the core. We're always working at the edges for kids who are unseen. Like why this for you? Why are you on this board? So just take a second, jot down a note. Okay. Why this board? Why this work?
I can get it started. Very simple for me. Product of Oregon schools. A devout Oregonian. And I am dedicated that our children have that same, same Oregon that I, that I had. And that's not, I'll stop because I can pontificate. I'm not trying to get us back to the nineteen fifties or sixties and make Oregon great again. I'm just saying that there are wonderful opportunities through education and I want to make sure our children have that.
I can pop a point off of that one. Tried to keep it to one sentence. I am in public service because I'm committed to a future where a child's background, meaning their family income, their race, their disability status, et cetera, can no longer be used as a predictor of educational, economic and health outcomes over a person's life.
Well, I didn't write down a sentence like Dorian so clearly articulated it, but a similar view to what he said. When I got involved, first got involved in my new little school district where I had moved, it was with the intention of hopefully trying to improve the outcomes for my children who are in this new little rural school district. But I realized as we moved forward that, you know, my children really had every advantage. And so many children don't. And this, so, you know, I stayed involved to hopefully support generating opportunities for all the other children. And, and, you know, that's only more and more important these days. And be also, I will say to your point about this, one of the reasons I've loved this board and have stayed on this board is because of the breadth of the things and it's so interesting. I mean, there are just, there's just so much to learn.
For, uh, fifty-five years straight without a break, I have been involved in public education, either as a student, faculty member, an administrator, and now a board member. And I, it has powered me, I think, from my, um, personal experience, the, the, the power of education, first in the family, only in the family to go to college. And to see the difference over the years that, uh, in my life and but in the lives of, of individuals that I've been associated with within the public education system, that it is the way to break cycles, whether that's a cycle of abuse, poverty, addiction. It is the way out and that's my motivator.
You all have articulated, um, so well, especially around me because we, so, you know, just my parents, right? Rooted in sort of public circles. It's just been my life. Um, I believe public education is cornerstone of democracy. Still believe it? I'm gonna stand there. And Dan, I'm just gonna say I believe in you. Um, that's my why for the E S D because, no. I'm your boss, so it's okay. Say that honestly and authentically because I believe you're highly innovative. You could deeply, um, add office work where you wanted to go and anyway. And I want to support that. I want to be on that ride. So.
Oh, I don't, uh, also, um, I grew up in North Carolina. Probably ninety-eight people work in tobacco farms. Uh, the why for me is because I was an E S D kid. And if I didn't have speech pathology services, I don't think I would have made it out. I didn't talk from kindergarten to almost the end of third grade. I couldn't. And to me, education was the difference. And I think that i- if I didn't have the education that I didn't have, if my mom wasn't an A L school teacher, if she didn't push education, if, if we weren't the only kids who had an encyclopedia because she took her little salary and paid for it and got a payment plan and all this stuff. I'll be right there with everybody else, working on the big farms now. And, uh, I think that, I think that E S D is like ours are the difference. That's really why I come here.
I think my, uh, personal experience, like I said, with our disabled son, where they hardly could spell autism back then, weren't sure what he had. And I had a child that didn't talk and didn't walk and all those things at four and five. That, uh, but finding the resources in a small communities, but that tapped into eventually all of the services of an E S D really made a difference and really to make sure that every child has that, uh, equitable education that, um, not just the really smart kids, which I had those too, but that even, even somebody with some major disabilities can partake of. And at least know, can read. Very important that people can read. So, and I love working with you too.
No, um, I wrote mine down, so I'll just read it. After investing a large part of my career in Northwest Regional E S D since its inception, I understand the power of school district collaboration and the economies of scale that can occur to effectively support our neediest children. So that's basically why I'm here. Plus, you asked me.
I can, I can go next. So I, I didn't write mine down. I took notes, but, um, you know, I, I started my career working for the Clackamas E S D. Um, and I saw the power of what an E S D can accomplish. And it is the convener, as, as Dan said, and, and the partnerships, um, and, and the, uh, efficiencies. Um, and the inspiration that happens when you have an E S D supporting multiple school districts is, is really incredible. Um, and as a leader, my philosophy has always been just helping people reach their full potential, helping them be the best they can be. And public education is a cornerstone of that. So, um, I could go on, but I'll leave it there. That was more than one sentence.
Everybody hit it? All right. We did some, uh, core values work yesterday with my leadership team and, um, we whittled down, each of us whittled down our core values to three. That is a hard thing to do, by the way. And one of mine is justice. One of my core values is justice. And I'm in public ed because it's justice. It is a place where, as Maureen said, it's, it's the cornerstone of democracy and without it, communities get left behind, kids get left behind, you know, services are completely inequitable. And so I truly believe this is kind of like the last bastion in America of everybody's going to get a quality thing that's meaningful in their life. Um, we don't do a very good job of that, in my opinion, in America. Um, healthcare, housing, you know, you just name it. So for me, it's justice and that's what makes me show up. One of the, one of the three things that made me show up the E S D. All right. I really appreciate us, uh, starting our time like this. Brian, I know is outside. And we are going to talk a little bit about how these things that we just talked about show up in, uh, our strategic work, yeah, hopefully in our next iteration. So for those people who have not met Brian, this is Brian Bain. Uh, Brian, uh, I've gotten to work with or near Brian for a long time now, a long time now. So, uh, Brian was a, uh, he came from outside the education system. Um, this was planned, but came from outside the education system. And, uh, I met him when he was working at North Clackamas School District. And it was like when state testing just kind of started to be a real thing, really.
It was N C L B?
N C L B. And, um, I met Brian in this assessment meeting and I'm like, that guy knows what he's doing. And I happen to be the assess, I had a lot of titles at Tiger Twelton at the time, but one of them was assessment director. I'm like, that guy's better than me. And I recruited him. Started work, uh, and tired, uh, with me. And, uh, so we've had a nice, long journey. So with that, um, Brian, we just kind of set up a little bit of our, um, our why, why we're doing this work. Real fast with the board, there's a couple of slides in here. We're just kind of blitz through because you've seen them before. And, uh, I just want to remind folks where we are in space and time. The board and where the boards touch on at least strategic plan monitoring and knowing if we're achieving what we're setting out to do. Um, you get a multiple updates, uh, during the year. And then the other thing that I make sure, uh, and we'll do this later together, actually, in our work session, is we try to scope and sequence out our board presentations to the board and have them highly connected to our strategic plan work. and have them highly connected to our strategic plan work. So like when you get a presentation on instructional coaching, that is rooted in our strategic plan around helping teachers and school districts improve their practice, right? And so we connect all these things up. So you get a lot of strategic plan reports. Sometimes it's overt, like stock takes and things that we'll go over with you today. And sometimes it's a little covert, you know, we just slide it in there on the, on the presentations. Um, so we do this thing called Stocktake, um, which is a twice, uh, a year activity where we uh, pull data from all these different departments, um, and who are doing the frontline work. And as a cabinet team, uh, under Brian's facilitation, we, uh, review all of our progress. We have a, and, and then we have a system for doing that. So.
Yeah. So yeah, during that stock take, we're essentially looking at every single strategy and all the work that's going into it and measuring the progress with numbers where we can and also with this rating, uh, scale where we look at the quality of our planning, our capacity to drive progress. And then our evidence of progress, that is obviously key metrics. Uh, we use the four colors down at the bottom to indicate how we feel about the success of that. We're going to do a piece of work. And we look at them, collective commitment by collective commitment. And so at the end of one collective commitment, reviewing all the strategies, we look at what commitment. So, and give it an overall maybe. So on the net line, this is how we rated the collective commitments this last few stock take. In here, you can see about fifty percent of them are in the solid green, uh, which is really great, amazing. Can you push that? And that was a lot of growth. We saw a lot of growth from where we had rated on Q to say, oh, you gotta make the trade. So overall, uh, you know, a lot of growth there. Uh, the overall likelihood, about sixty-six percent of our, our strategies were rated on, um, overall likelihood of success being really high. What we wanted to look at though, was how that's changed over time. You can see back in twenty-one, twenty-two, that's the first time that we really started tracking this following the pandemic. Where we were, and as the board knows, we went through some changes in our strategic plan following that too, because we felt like we were way off. Just the things that we were trying to accomplish in that post pandemic era didn't align with what was needed. Uh, so we've made some changes and as we continue to implement and improve, we're seeing that we're you know, seeing and feeling more success with them doing. I wanted to give you a little bit about those two collective commitments where we saw some of the yellow. And so these, the first one here is collective commitment one. This collective commitment is essentially around our, our equity and anti racism work. It calls in the E F Ps, uh, equity learning opportunities and our H R uh, strategies. For the most part, our E L Ts and our equity learning opportunities and even the equity modules are going phenomenal. Those are actually rated really high. Uh, some of the question in this one was around things in our H R realm around G Y O and our diverse educator pathways work. We have lots of participants in those programs and we're not always able to measure their progress through the program and to know how that's going. So that became a area of question where we felt like we had more work to do.
Let's say one more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
The other thing, um, on that one, um, and of course I wasn't even at the meeting because I had another death in my family and I was back in New York for this one, but uh, the G Y O funds, um, in the state have been completely cut out of state budget. And so there's a lot of consternation on the team about, you know, when you have no resources to do a program, can you actually achieve the outcomes? Um, and so there's a lot of consternation about whether we're going to be able to, you know.
Yeah, our likelihood of success there. Yeah.
I feel like you need a new color for that.
Gray.
Hey, I mean.
Yeah.
So that was, that was the other note on here. Um, the other one that we want to call out was collective commitment two. This primarily relates to our M T S S structures and our safety plans. Uh, one of the benefits of stock take is that we get an opportunity to have real discussions around the work. And some things that came up was, um, shared accountability around the safety plans. And so there's actually more directors involved in how those are going to move forward because while they were happening, there was some concern that they weren't happening, um, to the full fidelity that we wanted. And, oh, go ahead.
Not to, and I, I, I have no idea of everyone, but I know it's something we do in education all the time. When we use these acronyms. I, I don't know if everybody knows exactly what the acronyms are, so especially for, just to make sure we.
Can't do. I, I will, you may have to stop me again because it does flow naturally, but.
I know, I know.
I will try. So, um, M T S S is multi-tiered systems of support. Um, those are support systems for students. Uh, generally you'd be looking at, there's some good examples out there, positive behavior and intervention supports. That's right acronym.
You're killing it.
P B I S. I had, I had to untranslate that one. Um, so P B I S is all around behaviors. This is for kids, selling positive behavior environments in school. Another one is R T I, which is, uh, response to intervention is all about meeting instruction primarily. We have teams that are working to facilitate that work with school districts and help them to build those systems. Uh, what we're finding is that we have done a really great job now of clearly defining what those programs are going to look like when they're successful. And helping people to work their way through those implementations. We're just not seeing um, all the progress yet that we'd want in that. So I think that comes here, part of it is just making sure that we can keep people engaged and moving forward down those paths.
One of the key problems of an E S D, um, like we have a lot of influence and very little power around what actually gets implemented when it comes to these systems. And so, um, so yeah, so we see some starts and stops, district leadership changes. You have to, you know, reboot the whole thing over again. So uh, we're seeing spotty implementation.
Um, so the next little section we wanted to dive into was celebrating progress, but before we do that, I did want to just take a minute if there are any other questions in this area. Or acronyms, I.
I have a lot of questions. Um, so I don't know if this is my time where I really indeed, or should, or, or choose as far as what we're going to do after this, which is, this is like our overarching look back on the plan. And we're gonna give you some time to actually look at some of this data that we provided.
The celebrations, yeah.
So if it's wherever it fits for you.
I would say anything before this, this is a good place for that. And then we can, we'll have more pauses too.
Okay. So anything that you just covered.
I, yeah.
Um, so I just, I just, I just, you said that, um, that, that there's clarity missing. So you said the G Y O and developing a diverse workforce, the program goal definitions are still unclear.
Yeah. So there is some, um, we have lots of participants and say the G Y O, uh, which is the, uh, grow your own. It's students who are participating. It's not really clear that we have indication of those kids actually going on to college or, um, that those kids have graduated once they've left us. And so we're working on what does that definition look like? What do we call success? Is it just that the kids go to college or is it going further? Um, and how do we, how do we measure that?
So you're having trouble with the longitudinal view.
Of a kid and tracking them once they leave us.
So you're, so you're missing kind of college level markers. And okay, and, and that may be because they're, you know, distributing themselves across colleges across the country and you don't have a way of obtaining that information.
Um, it's mostly because Paul's systems don't talk to K twelve systems. So we lose kids and their identifiers.
Yeah, there's no identifier that spans.
If they go like, we have most, our four-year relationship for your college relationship in this program is Western. Um, but if kids go to Paul or they go to Oregon State, um, we lose our connection. So we can look at kids in Western, but if they go anywhere else.
Maybe that problem. So, um, there are industry solutions for a problem. I thought that that's what you were talking about. There are two industry solutions for that problem. So are we talking solutions yet or, or, or we're not talking? Okay. So then I would love to cover it.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the celebrations, yes, go ahead.
Yeah. So we give you a lot of data. Um, we're not, and this is a work session, so the hope is that we're not just talking at you the whole time, you know, you guys process things and like, uh, earners like that's a good opportunity for us to process some of the results and make some ahas. So what we'd like for you to do is look through the next set of slides, um, where we have basically each collective commitment, we picked out like two or three celebration points with some data. We give you some opportunities to look through that. Highlight one that you're like, I think that's, that's incredible. I want to highlight that we're doing this work and I didn't know we were doing that. And that's, you know, I, I want to highlight that. And then a place where you have more questions, um, around the data and, um.
I can't go backwards. What's that? I'm trying to go back and the slides won't go back. It only goes forward.
Small button.
Got it. All right. There you go.
Yep. So, um, these next set of slides are just sort of time for you to look through them. Like, uh, here, give me that for a second. Just for an example. So here's, you know, I'll do this one. Like this one, we were just talking about this diverse educator pathway program, which includes our grow your own, um, components. And you see that we have fifty-four percent increase in the diversity of participants in this, in this program uh, in racial person. Uh, so, and, and you have some sense of the, of the data over time for a year. If that's a program of interest for you, you think that's something worth talking about, highlight it. We'll bring everybody back here in a couple of minutes and ask you to share your aha from the data or your question. Cause we can't go through it all. Like it's just too. All right. You guys have access to the slide deck and everything?
Wouldn't you remind me of the wifi connection?
It's guest. Taking connected guest.
It's guest. Okay. Some reason it keeps.
Yep. Like the next, these next few slides.
Oh, yeah.
All the way through.
The white ones.
All the white ones. Uh, the last one. Being about budget. So it'll take about two minutes? Three minutes?
I did make you a slide, but we can't drop out of it.
Hey. What was an aha for you in this data set?
Can I first ask a point of clarification? When I'm looking at all of these things and do we, is this data, compound data from all of our participating districts?
That's a great question. Um, it depends on the strategy.
Okay, that's what I, okay.
Like, um, they're, like, I'm looking at three point one, third grade reading, um, teachers and letters programs have reduced the risk level first. That is all the teachers from our twenty districts who are in our program and their kids in their classrooms. So they're getting the training from us. It's the kids in their classrooms. All right. So that's like the way to read that one. Whereas like we have some that are very specific to our social emotional learning schools. Right? Or E I E C S E. That's us. That's just us.
Right. I, I can figure that, but that would be, that would be a real big point of, of clarification for me. Cause I was having to decipher myself, you know, I know E I, you know, E C S, that's not going to be all of our school districts. Yeah, that's us. So.
Maybe we could label them internal, external or.
Yeah. Cause Brian, that was going to be the start of my question. I'm like, oh, it's S E L schools in the title, but it in prens or something.
E S D kids.
Yeah. Well, but it, and you actually, but something I totally agree with Becky, that you have to stop and think, who are we? Who's our, um, audience? Data set.
Appreciate that. That's great.
I got a question. Sorry. You know, I'm gonna have a bunch. Like, so, um, but I'll start with strategy one point five first. Cause I don't have slide numbers. I think this is twenty-three-ish.
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty, yeah.
Twenty-five, but that's fine. Good.
Um, so where's the goalpost on that? Um, you know, are, are, are we, are we trying to have the same employment mix as the local population? What are, what are, what do we try to do?
Great question.
It's in our strategy, like our meta.
Yeah. So it is essentially to match the demographics of students. It's the main, um, and that would be the demographics of students across the four county region and all the twenty districts. Uh, that's what we're using as the benchmark for it. The program was primarily, um, I don't know, targets, right word, identifying participants who are Latinx, um, which was, is a need, if one of our more significant needs, uh, but they felt that they needed to diversify and include be more purposeful, including Black and Pacific Islander and other populations into that. So that was incentive there.
Okay. Um, because here I was trying to, I'm trying to underswold. So I, so I see your measures and I see the outcome. I just can't see the goal here on its own articulated. So it's difficult to understand how close or far away you are. Um, any idea how close or far away?
Um, yes.
Let's go.
Far. Yeah, I mean, we, uh, in general, I mean, in Oregon, especially like statewide, but in our region is no different. Um, the proportion of students in our public education system who are Latinx, especially is our biggest racial minority group in the state, um, is far greater than the number of instructors.
So, yeah, so, so, so whenever I saw this, right away I saw, um, I saw a link between this and, uh, and the previous slide, previous slides where you were saying, hey, like we're having an issue here. And, and things weren't clear. I said, well, we need to actively have the goal in front of our face. And we were showing data like this. This, so, so this makes it seem like ten percent is the goal. It was not the goal. So these bars should be real small in the culture. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that, that's the first one that I had. And maybe I should pause. I mean, I can.
Yeah. So the one thing I'll, I'll say about this data, uh, just to give you a sense, right? Like of how we actually use this data internally. So each one of these strategies has a team that is around it. And we're giving you one slice of data from this team. And, you know, trying to put it like to something that's clear on a slide.
Sure.
There is, um, one, but you are on to something, which is, and we often say this too, like we are data rich and information poor in our, in our systems. Like we have tons of data and we don't do a great job oftentimes of making clear sense of it. So, yes, I feel like, well, well taken.
So, so I appreciate that, that there, there is an ultimate target that you're looking for, right, or a goal. But sometimes if the road ahead is so long, right? You get paralyzed by that gap. And I think it is still important to recognize progress, right? Because if you're focused on, you know, if you're forty percent points away from where you want to be, but you know, you're not going to get there in a short amount of time necessarily, right? So being able to see and show progress, I think is also important. You don't want to mislead, but.
No, I would totally agree with that. But what we're seeing right now in this environment is we're seeing, um, uh, where these conversations are becoming taboo. We're seeing where the funding is going down. This isn't the time to, uh, to to cover up the fact that there's a big gap.
Yeah.
Right?
I agree.
This isn't the time to relax.
I know, I agree.
So I would agree with that usually, but in this case, and I keep in mind, so like, I'm the graph guy, like, like, I mean, like, I'm like, this is my document. I mean, this is my idea, right? So, so I'm sorry. I'm, I'm just, but, but if I'm telling the story, right? For a public document like this, I would want people to know, hey, look, just because the bar comes to the top.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean you can cut funding.
That's right.
Because that's what's happening. So That's why I'm saying. Perspective here is important, tell, telling the story is important, and when we come back to this thing next year, I want us to be able to say, we told the right story, we got the funding back. Is that fair?
Other ahahs?
No, 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 I appreciate it, and I agree with you too.
Coming up three point two, the expanding experience learning, I know we've heard a little bit about that, but I don't know. What the plan is, or is it just launching the first blood, I.
Yeah, so.
Which I, I really appreciate this, because I think we need this.
Yes, yeah, yeah, and I appreciate the question, because we have a long road ahead and the road is one which will be. Right now, is still being envisioned in many ways, so this is, this is a specific just celebration that we got something off the ground for the first time in ESD. Around inter-district workforce development, right now, these are in our region. The big districts have lots of programs, the small districts have one or two, and if you're a kid that doesn't care about those one or two, you're out of luck, right? So the notion here is that we're on the road to doing more inter-district. Inter-community workforce development program, so this was our first foray, it's off the ground. We want to celebrate our teams that do this work, like they took nothing and made something, and it's a really cool partnership. The Adam Whalen, who I tried to convince not to drive over here today, but he's coming. But he, he was just hired and his first order of business is to. Get county connection going around this work, so we're in Tillma County, Tillma County has a structure. For talking about workforce, because Paul's at the table in the community college with the school districts, we don't have business. And we don't have workforce development, like board folks there, his job is to create that condition, those. Conditions for that kind of collaboration in every one of our counties, Washington County will be a bigger. Mess in some ways, because there's so many different. Agencies that overlap one another, like there's multiple workforce boards, you know, like this, it just gets a little bit more gnarly. But his job is to, is to get that together and then start doing, using the data and the gaps analysis, that we have tons of data on like. What are the high, mean, high paying jobs, where, what are the amount of programs in the community colleges or four years that are getting kids to degree or credential? Where are the gaps, where can we make the biggest impact, so that, that will be the work going ahead.
Perfect, I think that it's. In those communities, the way it's sold, if you will, is going to make such a big impact, because. You know, in the, the small community that I'm in, they, they always talk about this. But, and we have this Omic. That's full, but boy, you sure, I mean, there's no. You know, beating their drums about it, or at least not in the circles and then.
The good news is on this particular body of work, like really the ESD has never been in this world, other ESDs have. Not a lot of them, usually this is a very community college driven area. And for instance, in your community in Scappus, you have Omic, but kids who don't live in Scappus don't have any way to really configure how to access that thing. So it is like the have and the have nots, and Scappus doesn't have a ton of programs, but it does have that, right? So for us, it's like, how do we get the whole county, plus, you know, it's not that far from. Hillsboro over the mountain, right, so how do we get that thing to actually be a regional. And expand access for kids, so that's.
Can we talk about it normally? Um, that's, well, I would, I would love to be able to, like, one more side.
More, more, I'm sorry.
Uh, can we talk about the, you know, workforce opportunities, the equity issues around that? Because, like, I have the business seat, so. I want to.
Absolutely, we will, like, when we talk about. Program presentations and the flow, we have some suggestions in like when we'll do presentations. But we also need, like, this is an awesome, perfect opportunity really for the two of you, right, to help us and help Adam. Yeah, help Adam think about how to do this effectively in our region, he has a great schema for Willamette. And he is very humble about not having that scheme on here, so I think that'd be.
And we have a lot of opportunities going on with some workforce development partnerships with some national initiatives we're involved with, so.
So now we'll jump to my second question. So this is another equity related question, but it's kind of around data that I'm not seeing. Um, you know, so, so, so we work really hard to make sure that our students have access to broadband. Um, I would like to understand, especially for our more rural areas. Um, I would like to see it here, so we can understand, okay, so like, in previous. Meetings, we've seen like a, a, a coverage map, right, so I'd like to understand how that's going. Um, and the, the impact on that, meaning, meaning, hey, look, so they have access to broadband when they're at school. But what about when they're at home, do they have access to a coding classes, do they have access to, you know, tomorrow's workforce? So that, so, so that's the equity piece that I'm trying to pull, just kind of this urban versus rural. Piece, and just make sure that they have everything. That, so. I don't, I don't know if that's for today, but.
Yeah, probably not.
I'm looking for that.
Probably not, but it is another good reminder for, like, what the board wants to, wants us to bring before then. And of course, like Stuart just literally left, he said it, and now he's back. But there's just a question about the broadband and what it really means to be connected, you know, beyond whether we are or not. Like, how does home connection work, et cetera, so we're just gonna, no, don't worry, don't worry.
Okay, not worried.
Don't worry. But it's just that, it's a question, we did, like, there are thirties two, I think. Strategies here, and that's one of them, we just didn't highlight every one of them, but we'll put that one on the back of them.
Something around eighty six metrics total.
Thirty six metrics.
And they aren't, they are, those are metrics that we're looking to impact within one year, they're not those broad metrics that you're talking about, they're. More beyond, right?
Anything else that struck anybody?
I was impressed with the progress on four point two, the evaluation practices. Um, accounting for cultural identities, that looks like a huge change from ten percent to fifty five percent.
Talk about that.
Um, I can talk a little bit about it, but it's actually in both our EIECSE, I'm not sure which one this one, I think it's both, but EIECSE and special education. They sat down and they looked at how they're evaluating student sports services and made sure they were culturally responsive, they gave. I'm an outsider, I've never evaluated a kid for special education, but they gave me some examples like cultural differences where we may be looking for a student to hold their own spoon. And in some cultures, families actually feed students for, our children for much longer than an American. Family, like, and so a student can't hold their own spoon, but that's okay. And just making sure that we're aware of those cultural differences, as well as ensuring that translation is happening on all the documents that parents have provided. And language supports are there, they're just being very purposeful and recording those sorts of things and making sure that they're happy.
Um, so the, the big change here was we, this team, these teams came together with outside consultant expert Lori Cohen. And developed a rubric for culturally sustaining evaluation practices, and then they are evaluating the actual evaluations that come in. In against this rubric and doing professional learning over time with it. And Hillsborough's, one of the reasons why we took this work on is Hillsborough's full district. Backed out of our EIECSE evaluation services, they're the only district that didn't do it with us, and they were concerned. That our evaluations were not culturally sustaining in that way. They are now coming back into us for the first time in many years this year, because they, we've been doing this work with them and they're like, okay, you got it, and so. Just good to get kicked in the butt once in a while.
I didn't have that context.
So Brian, I would just always do a shout out for hitting third grade reading benchmarks. Um, so great to see that, the only clarifying question I have, so the letters of cohort students. Or the, the program, the five hundred and then the count below of eighteen, so, so. The bars or scores, the count are, what's the eighteen?
Which runs through eighteen.
Um, so whatever page I'm on, do you want me to show you?
You're on twenty five.
It's the.
Point one.
Yeah. Count of eighteen. Should that not be?
I don't know what that is, I was actually just looking because you guys may not be able to see it, but there is. A list, it's about a thousand students.
Okay, good.
If I divide a thou, a thousand by eighteen, thinking maybe it's eighteen teachers, I'm not sure that's correct, so, yeah, I've got the raw numbers here and it's. You know, we went from, from that high risk category, almost. Four hundred seventy five students that were in that high risk down to about three hundred nineteen.
Okay. So, um, yes, so I just always, I just, that's such a critical benchmark, so I'm just excited to see that, and again, the advocacy of why. The ESD should be leading some of this charge to ensure our students are reading at grade level in third grade. And I think the, and maybe this is, you know, me being old school and those of you that, that navigate the digital world. But sometimes it would be helpful, I think, to almost have that book, especially as we go into the new strategic plan. So here's our, our key six strategies, and then here's the programs, almost like a book. So that I can, as we talk about programs, tie it always back, because I know that's how you, you think and that's where they land, but. Or have that easily accessible, because then I kind of want to go back, okay, and this, you guys have done that, right, you've connected a particular program to the strategy. But just to have that as a reference, and I think I've seen it, it would just be able to recall that and make those kind of connections.
So Brian does have a strategic plan dashboard that is accessible internally.
Okay, so if it ever makes sense, if it's a quarterly, or just to, because it helps to kind of be able to tie back.
Yeah.
To that. Yeah.
And all the school districts are really good about giving you apple to apple comparison, right, they're not.
That is not true, those are, that's not a variety of different assessments, but we do try to align with science or reading based assessments. And so you'll find there's the cadence and dibbles in there, which pretty much apples to apples, but there are other assessments being used like I ready and such.
Because that's good, that's what's going to be the big issue with this whole accountability bill. Are we all using the same? I, I know, but that's what, so I, even if we can break it down to the component of our twenty. ESDs, are we, are we talking about?
In, in this case, we took the stance of whatever your system is telling you is high risk, that's what we're going to use, and so they are given assessments, but those assessments have criteria. For what's high risk.
If we can get all the districts to do one thing, the same, just one. Miracle, it's just not how the system's set up, like, here's a word for every district we have.
Local control, yeah.
So I'm going to move us.
Yeah, and I just wanted to support the questions that Ernest had, I think, as we think about even going into the future strategic plan, that how are we progressing and was the end game goal? That just helps keep, what are we targeted for, so I just appreciate the questions in the comments.
Alright, I'm gonna, we're, we're behind, you know, it's all, it's all good, it's a work session, so we're, we're behind, so I'm going to move us a little bit quickly, quickly here. We have Jordan and Catherine, we want to do the ESD two oh one session, and we'll talk about resources, et cetera. We might have to evaluate and after lunch and then kind of rejigger some things and give a few of the lunch. Okay, so a new path forward, so this is our year where the strategic plan ends. And during that ending year, we need to be planning forward for the next, for the next iteration. This is the framework of what we're recommending to the board, and unless the board really disagrees, and then we would kind of have to add some more steps. We've done a lot of work over time to establish our mission, our vision and our values. We don't, we're not recommending that we unpeel back the entire thing and do like new branding and all that stuff. We really want to get into the strategies and the work, we think this is the right frame, this, excuse me, is the right framework for us to work under. And our recommendation is to use the values that we have as an organization as the organizing pillars. For strategic work, so innovation and what are the strategies under innovation to really maximize that value, really achieve what we want. For our vision, equity, what are the equity strategies and have them built that way? But the change, Owen, just for the board's. Knowledge, right, like, this is the, this is the years and the time that we spent establishing these, so these aren't like twenty five year old statements, right, like, these, these are very fresh. Okay, yes, 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 so the way that we'll look now, you've seen this slide from Brian before, we have our vision and mission. Right now, we have collective commitments, those six collective commitment areas, and those lead to strategies, the strategies then lead to department goals. And action steps within that cascade throughout the organization, what we're proposing is that that collective commitments. Um, box becomes our values box, and then we reorganize some of our strategies in that way, so that's the big. That's the big organizational change, we are putting together a design team. Um, and the design team, if the board is in agreement with this strategy, this move here, the design team will focus on the how, right? Um, not on the why, so it's going to be on how, and then we're going to get to the stuff. Um, our design team is coming together, we have a first meeting scheduled in August. Uh, it is, the team is going to be culturally diverse, it's going to be programmatically diverse, in other words, EIECSE. Workforce development, folks, you know, like all the way and everything in between, classroom teachers. Uh, diverse regarding the employee, uh, deployment groups, so classified staff, licensed staff, administrator staff. Um, and the functions for this team are to provide feedback and recommendations. To make recommendations for community engagement and listening, community listening, to review quantitative and this qualitative data. To review research together as a team and to synthesize that and come up with some recommendations for strategies that will cascade through this plan. A timeline for that is here, as you know, we are very. We're into like multiple years of implementing, implementing a liberatory design as our equity design strategy. And you see the lotus flower here starts, well, it starts anywhere, but like, we're starting with empathizing, like, how do we empathize with communities and understand where people are at? Through defining problems, inquiring about next moves and basically being co-designed, which you all have heard me talk about quite a, quite a lot. Uh, by December, we should be articulating strategies and the board will start getting updates, you know, we'll get updates throughout this process. Um, in January is the goal for you all to get a first read of a plan that we feel is defensible and. And, and, and move the dial for kids, we're going to ask the board if this all works out like as planned, we would ask the board to adopt this plan in February. Uh, the re, we have lots of reasons for accelerating, but we're going to have a very, very busy spring here, with all the things that we've got going on that we talked about. So we don't want to be doing strategic work while doing wall, wall bargaining and all the stuff, we don't have the revenue for that.
Question for our strategy expert, are y'all doing tight school level work?
What school level?
Tight school level strategy work. Tactical level strategy work.
I know what tight school means.
Tactical.
Oh, tech, yeah. So if we're actually, the very first thing on this is uh, that August, September. What we're gonna start with there is actually looking at data. Uh, to see the system, review data, where we at currently, and we're gonna look at it with like a SWOT analysis. What's our strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities? And threats to our business, such as cutting funding. Uh, so we'll start it there. Is that what you're referring to?
Kind of so, so um, I'll tell you what I'm looking for. So, so right now I see like. Mission, vision, values, strategy work, that's here, jump to action plan. But I don't see the leverage points that would come out of doing tactical planning. So something that says, hey, look, we're at nine percent on this one goal. Or on this one measure. Our goal is forty percent. We could make a ten percent jump if we did this one thing that we haven't done before.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, 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 so these are the kind of tactical leverage points. And, and, and I'm just wondering.
I think.
That I think sometimes the language and terminology is a nomenclature that's used in the private sector. Can be similar but different than the nomenclature that's used in the public sector. I wonder if it might make sense perhaps to do like a deeper dive into the dashboard. Like I know last year we got to take an in-depth look, like you have so many. Metrics of evaluation, both focused, I think what you're getting to on outputs, but also to outcomes. Um, and I've been consistently impressed with your blend of quantitative and qualitative measures. And I know that it's really hard as staff to determine, you know, do you keep the board at the ten thousand foot view or all the way down to brass tacks? And I just want to be respectful that this is a governance board rather than an operational board. And so I actually really appreciate not getting all the way down to the brass tacks because. I, we trust you on the operations side. I think I would, I would welcome some more information, maybe in the packet or link to the dashboard. But at least for me personally, I don't want to get down to that nitty gritty because. You know, I see my role as being in governance. And I think there might be a nomenclature or um. Uh, like sectoral difference in the language that you're using. Cause I think what I'm, I think. What I'm seeing between the two of you is using different terms to talk about the same thing.
I'm, I'm gonna call that piece out. I, I feel like what you're talking about is what we're calling strategies. Is those, um, you know, if we do these things, we'll get that jump. Or am I seeing that different?
Yeah, in a sense, so, so. So I keep my, so, so professionally, like I do this for governments and for commercial works, right? And what we see is that this step is commonly missing. And as a result, there is a um. There was a movement towards status quo, right? As a result. And we, and, and what we see is, is that, is that when that piece isn't. When that piece is there, you see um, you see a faster movement towards goals. Right? So when I see a middle of years where, where our performance is kind of close. I'm like, okay, so where is, like, where is the leverage to, you know, move up? Um, and, and I'm just, I'm just thinking like, hey, how can we do this?
Yeah.
I know in the beginning of the year, we, and again, we'll talk about it later today, just the presentation format for the board. Um, cause we have a number of these updates. And one of the main levers that we use is we call them action plans, but they are. Tactical plans on um, on the actual nitty gritty strategy and how to flip up. It's much more detailed than the strategic plan view. So maybe we can dive back into that. Maybe you'll. Think maybe you'll. Set, be set, I don't know. That's the place where it comes together or doesn't.
There might not be any support right now, so I was, I was just curious.
Yeah. Learn to talk about.
So um, there is uh, in your packets, there's a, there's a one pager that's not so flashy with the lotus flower and everything. But it gives you the timeline. Are there any questions or, you know, beyond like the, the structure of the plan, like just process wise? Like, are we on the right path for the board here, process wise?
Seems expedient. Good job.
Expedient.
Especially on the, I, I worry about that September, October, the listening sessions. It just seems like. It just takes us so long to ramp up the beginning of the school year and get people all settled. I'm, I'm just wondering if, if you're gonna. Get that community input that you want that early in the school year is.
The one great thing, and this is one thing that's really different about this planning process than. Ones I've done in the past, because we are so involved in districts, community engagement efforts for the last four years, the integrated guidance. We already have a ton of commu- like ridiculous amounts of qualitative feedback. From every school community. And it's required that those community engagements are with communities of color. Communities who are migrant, communities who are uh, supporting kids with disabilities, right? So we actually have, I, we're not gonna, we're not gonna redo the whole wheel.
That, that's a, that's a great point, that we've all had to do that in the districts and um, that, that's a great point.
You do all the work in, with internal, internally, you don't, you have any external contractors support for any of this?
No. That is like a. I feel very strongly that um, in order for us to own this work, we need to do this work. And I've done it both ways in my career, where we've used external facilitators and done it internal and. I just feel strongly that we have amazing skill sets at the E S D. In this area, we help districts do strategic planning, do this integrated guidance part, like we have a lot of muscle around this.
Uh, and, and I, I agree that I think the product is more meaningful. If you do it internally, I was just worried about bandwidth timeline, what's going on, you know? But I, I, I appreciate your judgment on that.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be hard.
So Dan, I do have a, so I remember coming on the board in twenty-one. And um, always felt, again, local hat, right? That strategic planning was the kind of board's purview, right? And so it was like, oh, it was interesting to me, kind of how the E S D does this. So I'm not opposed to this and, and I really appreciate the exchange. Like the, from Ernest's lens as well as Dorian's. But my ask is, part of me feels like. If the, the board is really seeing this in January to adopt in February, there's not a lot of space for um. Feedback in the sense that, I mean, we're almost, you know, rounded the bases, right? And you're not looking for, so what I would, I, what I would appreciate, because I'm going to be curious about it. Is let's say that first su- superintendent update in, you know, September or October. Wh- what was accomplished? Just, it does not have to be part of a board presentation. But hey, this is what, this is what we learned from our communities. This was this month's goals. This is what we've accomplished. This is, this is what we think our goals are gonna be. Right? So I'm not asking to jump in and, and, you know, tell you what to do. But to, but I would love to have that, hey, this is how we're progressing. Um, feedback once a month in your superintendent report. So we have a sense of where we're headed. So, like the workforce development, right? I mean, that will be in my mind huge work. And, and I think all of us care deeply about how that progresses across all four counties. So just, you know. Give us um, a little bit of a, a, a trail with, you know, um, popcorn. I don't know what I'm trying to say, but.
Bring us along in the.
Bring us along. Yes, bring us along in your journey, uh, not to micromanage it, but to um, maybe have a, a curiosity along the way. But uh, and I'm hearing that the board agrees with that. That gets quiet over there.
Not on the same page, but I think we just started a, you know, four year. Uh, way through the mud, where anytime the word equity comes up, diversity comes up. We're gonna be worried about loss of funding, things like this. So my concern is that two years from now. Or a year from now, we are having a conversation. Around, hey, look, because we use the word equity. And, and, and they don't see progress on these goals and they don't, and we're not telling the right story or whatever. We lose a bunch of funding, but we end up hurting more kids. So. That's the thing I am, I am, I am so hard, or, or I am so fearful of. And, and if you hear me like pushing over and over, that's the real button.
Yep. Well, um, one of the things that we're recommending. Right now, like we're not voting right now, but you're hearing me and we can always put stuff on agendas, right? With the, through the board chair. Um, is that we maintain our values and our values are equity. I don't know what else we do at the E S D if we're not doing that work. And so um, you know, I've talked to you guys about this in the past, like we could, we could. Be in a bad spot with that decision. Um, I just uh, feel strongly um, that we. Don't give up our values before we have to. Like, if, if we get smacked around and we're gonna lose a billion dollars and raises on the wall and it's right there. Then I think we have to have some harder conversations as a board about that. But until that moment. I just, I just kind of would recommend strongly that we maintain our focus in those, in those areas.
I have very strong vehement opinions on this and have been very engaged on this issue and other local governments. Y'all might have seen my op ed and other things. Um, if we're gonna have that conversation as a board. I would like that to be very planful in advance. Um, uh, we would not be meeting, meeting the expectations of community if we removed words like equity. Um, and that's, I can tell you right now, that's not something I would vote for.
Um, Madam Chair, we are, you know, we're behind. Would you like to do one more item and then have a little bit later lunch? Or do we want?
That's what I would like to do, if everybody's okay with that. Um, and um, I'm even open to. Um, a working lunch. Uh, but give people a break to use, you know, um, just so we, because I. I know if we keep pushing, there are so many things in the afternoon and I don't want to shortcut them at all. But I'm also mindful of the fact that people have to drive back to the other place that we can't, you know, so, so that would be my um. Preference.
Well, let's keep powering. And um, Brian, I just want to thank you for your work. It is super important, excellent.
That Vancouver watched it with that. You can go to Hillsborough first.
All right, so. So uh, the board knows, and most of the board knows, this is Jordan Ely, he's our uh, CFO. And Catherine Dahlby is our Chief Human Resources Officer in her first month as the chief.
That's right.
Yes, as the director uh, with us, the E S D for years now. So. Um, as I shared before, we met in the uh, today and when I put out um, little communication to you all. Um, my hope is that everybody got a chance to look through that E S D one oh one stuff. I really had a good time putting that stuff together and I actually learned a lot, you know, about E S Ds. I didn't know about the local tax basis and how it all came together. And just that history. Um, at that time last year, one of the questions that we got, it came up a few times during the year. Um, for the board in different ways, but is this notion of how the funds come? Like, how do funds actually show up here? Where's the board's agency in? Program design, so to speak, or like direction when it comes to funds, because it really does not function like a school district. We don't function that way. We do do some direct service, but we really are not a school district. And things really show up in different ways. And the board has pinch points that are different than the flow of a local school system. And so we thought it'd be great to have to talk about that. So I'm gonna turn it over to y'all.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to say upfront, this is, this is the fifth presentation I'm delivering in the last week. And uh, so my head is all over the place. Cause these, it, it hasn't been the same. It's been five different topics. And so. Everything I'm gonna say today makes sense to me. In my head, it might not. I, I don't expect this to be the most masterful oration that has ever occurred in history. So. Uh, if there are things along the way, clarifying questions, please don't hesitate to interrupt. Uh, and ask for that clarification. So what we're going to do, Catherine and I, uh, is we're gonna start with. Like a philosophical deeper dive into um. Uh, E S D funding and like where uh, things exist in our budget differently than it does in uh, a school district budget. And then Catherine's gonna guide us through a, a protocol, a data review protocol. Uh, and I will say like, this isn't meant to be. Like a crazy deep dive. So for those who are more uh, involved with data analytics, it might leave you wanting a little bit. But we just want to start getting into using uh, a protocol. Uh, that we are gonna start using in cabinet as well to review data. So we're gonna look at three different charts that were all included in the budget book. Uh, so we've also, we've talked about them, the board has seen them, but we want, uh, rather than it being me telling you what you should glean from these. Uh, graphs, giving the board an opportunity to, to look at data and, and from your own lenses and perspective, rather than the seat that I'm sitting in. Uh, so that'll be the second thing. And then the third thing will be um, kind of a little bit of a role playing scenario. About a fictitious decision in front of the board. Uh, but to really illustrate where this board's power is uh, to wield influence over. How we receive money and how we spend money. Uh, so I just made up a scenario. It's kind of loosely adjacent to real life. And so hopefully it can uh, yield some meaning in practice as well, but um, it's, it's largely just illustrative point. So. Um, that's what we're gonna try to do today. We will try to uh, you know, push the, the speed a little bit. Uh, but also want to give it space it deserves to have a conversation. Uh, and I do think a lot of this could be done while. Uh, lunch is happening. And so if, if it comes to that point, Chair, and, and you'd like to take a pause so we can get lunch set up and then continue. Uh, I think we can do that pretty much anywhere. Okay. And now my slides won't advance. There we go. So uh, this is uh. This first box is um, my attempt, and I did this during the budget process as well. This is my attempt to try to clarify what money we actually have. For our agency. And so very first line, I say s- state school fund is six point two seven million. That is because we retain ten percent of our state school fund. So our, our state school fund this next year is estimated to be sixty-two point seven million. But ninety percent of that, we're gonna flow out to districts and then they can then spend that money with us, which then gets reflected later on. So with governmental accounting, what gets challenging is that we state our revenue and our expenditure sometimes three or four times. Um, that was a, a key learning from in-service last year that I got feedback from staff about, that they really appreciated uh, understanding that explicitly. But a, an example of that would be, we bring in the revenue to the general fund, we flow it out to uh, trust and agency fund. Uh, which that's a fund we hold at our district on behalf of our uh, school districts. And then for different reasons and how they manage their money, they might ask us to take that money as cash in lieu of service. But then spend their money buying a service from us. And so we recognize the revenue in the general fund, we recognize it as an expense going out to the trust and agency fund. We then recognize it as a revenue in the trust and agency fund, and then as an expense going out to the district. Then we recognize it as a revenue into the special revenue fund. Where we're gonna provide the service and then we recognize it as an expenditure going out of the special revenue fund to, to purchase staff time or. Supplies or whatever the case may be. And so we've, we've now seen the same dollar is reflected as three dollars. And so when we say we have a two hundred and seventy million dollar budget, two hundred and sixty-eight million dollar budget, that is true. Uh, we are not actually going to spend two hundred and sixty-eight million dollars in reality. That, some of that is just. Moving money around. And so this is just trying to like pare it down to what the revenue we actually use to operate this agency. And so six point three million of it will be the state school fund. Uh, we estimate forty-eight point six million in state grants. Fourteen million in federal grants, thirty-nine million in district contracts. That's districts within our agency and districts outside the agency. And then other is point seven million. So that might be donations and, and different things like that. Our service scope, we have twenty member districts. As you know, we serve more than a hundred thousand students collectively in those districts. Our agency has seven hundred and fifty-five budgeted F T E. Um, that does not include, that does include contractors in some cases, like in uh, if we're using contractors to deliver services in E I E C S E. Or um, uh, regional inclusive services or S E L schools. Uh, we do recognize those F T E, we unfund those F T E and then fund the contract and, you know. Uh, we do recognize those F T E, we unfund those F T E and then fund the contract and, you know. So the, uh, the seven fifty five should be mostly inclusive, but there are some small situations where we might contract a service and, and we don't recognize that as F T E.
And typically that's when we have, those are those hard to fill positions that we may not be able to find someone. So we use a contracting agency temporarily until we can hopefully in the, in the short order hire our own people.
So we have a hundred and twenty four sub-funds within our accounting structure. Uh, within those funds, we, we account for a hundred and thirty grants, uh, six different enterprise services and then of course our general fund. Uh, our general fund also has four sub-funds for a wellness fund and uh, professional development fund. Uh, and then a technology replacement fund. And so we, we use a hundred and twenty four sub-funds to keep track of all of these different dollars. Um, and then we have a hundred and ten contracts. This excludes C T A. And the only reason it excludes C T A is because Stuart and I have been very busy this summer and I didn't have time to connect with him. And so I know the, I know all the contracts that we have uh, with the main agency, if you will. And then we have a bunch of contracts with districts in C T A and you might off the top of your head, how many contracts you have?
C T A is?
Cascade Tech Alliance, I'm sorry. That is our technology enterprise uh, that is done in cooperation and collaboration with M E S, Multnom E S D. Uh, so we have a hundred and ten without C T A. And just off the top of my head, I do know that we provide, for example, E R P services to thirty five different school districts. So that would be thirty five contracts there.
Enterprise business functions. It's north, well north of fifty. Well north of fifty, there you go.
So we manage a lot of, um, these are revenue contracts that I'm referring to. Um, uh, of course we have. I, I won't even try to estimate how many expenditure contracts we have. Uh, so today we're just trying to build a deeper understanding of our fiscal structure and all that stuff, kind of already talked.
And then Jordan, you just said those are all revenue, but those are what's reflected.
Box number one.
Yeah.
They're all tied.
Yeah, that's our state grants, but our grants and district contracts is that a hundred and ten contracts, yeah. So uh, now when we look at it a different way, so that was looking at all of our revenue across all of our different funds that is available to us to spend. So like our trust and agency fund isn't included in that first slide because that's not our money. We're holding that as a custodian. It legally belongs to our districts. Uh, so that first slide was across all of our funds. This is how much money we have uh, to operate our agency. Looking at it a different way, this is how it breaks down by fund. Um, so we have a hundred and three million dollars in special revenues. Special revenues are restricted by statute. Um, so when, when we put money into the special revenue fund, we do so because that money came with strings attached to it, saying that we have to spend it a certain way. Um, and so we have no, once, once we accept that grant, once we accept that contract with a district. That says this is what we're gonna spend the money on, we then at that point do not have discretion to say, just kidding, we won't spend it on something else. Um, we can change how we spend it to deliver whatever the service is that the grant requires or, or the contract requires. But we can't change that we're spending it there. So we take a grant for workforce development. We can't say, but E I E C S E got shorted, so let's just go spend it on E I E C S E. That's, uh, so that's special revenue fund. Trust and agency fund, we have fifty million dollars. That is not our money. That is money that belongs to our school districts. Uh, the primary revenue source of that is the transfer off of our general fund from uh, the um, the state school fund. So of that ninety percent that goes out, twenty five percent of that goes straight into our special revenue fund. Um, and into our tech enterprise fund to provide core services. And then the other seventy five percent gets flowed out to the district's trust and agency funds. Um, the one exception to that is that for Beaverton and Hillsborough, it's four percent that goes into our special revenue fund or our tech enterprise fund. Ninety six percent goes into their trust and agency. Uh, they do a smaller contribution by percentage to the core. It's a very large actual dollar amount. Uh, they, they contribute a little over one point two million dollars a year to our core. Um, then in our general fund, these are our only unrestricted funds. Uh, the amount that is available for us to keep that we're not gonna transfer out uh, to our districts is about twelve million dollars. Uh, you saw on the first slide, six point seven million of that is the state school fund that we retain. The rest of this is uh, fees that we charge to grants, also known as indirect rate. And so this is money that we're pulling in off grants.
Why is our indirect rate so low? That is a big, but what, why?
Uh, I don't have any exact question. So this is, this is a priority for our fiscal team to understand. Uh, it has been a priority, like this isn't a new thing. It's one of the first things Dan talked to me about when I came to work in the agency. It's one of the first things my mom talked to me about.
She took a laugh instead of crying. I mean, that's really bad.
No, it's, it is bad. Um, we, but we don't know why. Uh, so we've had several meetings with the state to look at the reports that we upload that categorized direct versus indirect costs and all of these different things. And we have not found an error. Uh, so we, I have some theories that we are pursuing, but I don't, I don't yet know.
Just uh, not to answer the why, like um, we have the lowest indirect rate out of any E S D in the state. Um, we hypothesized that size has something to do with that and the, the volume, et cetera. Also, the state changed its formula for indirect rates probably in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, seventeen in there. And um, we couldn't, when I, when I came to the agency, uh, we were. On target to have no any fund balance at the end of the year. Or about one and a half, two percent or something like that and then next year was lights out. Um, and we couldn't figure out why and that was the, the primary reas, two reasons. We kept rates flat for our services and the indirect rate had precipit, uh, precipitously gone down. So this is a big issue for us. Thank you for that question.
I just wanted to call out that that's unusually low, but I'm also very satisfied with it. We'll get back to you. We're exploring it.
We, we take it upward.
I, I think it's fair for the board to know that we have uh, one of our campaigns is going line by line now. Through our financials and through three other E S D's financials to try to understand what we might be coding differently. So we think we, that is where I think the problem exists is in how we're coding certain expenditures. There are certain expenditures that get excluded from indirect, indirect consideration. Uh, and I, that is where I think the problem exists, but it's not immediately obvious to us. We did, we, we downloaded the state's chart, we did pivot tables and V lookups and all kinds of different ways of trying to look at the data to easily find. Where we might be coding something to the wrong function or, or something like that. It wasn't immediately obvious. And so now we're doing it line by line, manual analysis. The next lowest indirect rate in the state is seven percent. So um, it is a problem. We have doubled our grant revenue over the last ten years while uh, basically flatlining our indirect rate revenue, like actual dollars. So our indirect rate, the rate has cut in half while our revenue has doubled. And so we are bringing in the exact same amount of indirect revenue. The flip side of this coin though, and this is the, this is the warning I gave to Dan, and I think it's fair for the board to know, is that uh, if we do find this and we figure this out. That does mean, let's say it goes up seven percent. That does mean we're pulling an extra three to four million dollars off of our grants that isn't available to the program. So it's not like it's just gonna immediately solve a problem for us. It's just gonna move where we're accounting for that money.
I bet if you did a timing, I, I bet if you did a time study and you looked at how many hours people are working above forty hours, for example. You're gonna see the true hourly rate that people are receiving for, for a, for example. I bet that'd be really interesting.
Yeah.
And um, before I move ahead, can I look, I just wanna try to connect the prior slide to this side, looking at the E S D funding streams. I understand that the next slide, we have the trust and agency funds that aren't our funds, but I'm just trying to connect the numbers from that first box. Like, should they be flowing over to the next slide, revenue by fund type? Cause it, it's not, math isn't mathing.
They don't, yeah, they don't tie out. Uh, this is what gets challenging about looking at money in the E S D is that. Um, when we look at the hundred and three million dollars for the special revenue fund, that includes all of the revenue that's gonna come in. It doesn't take off any of the indirect that's going to leave. And so then when I say in the general fund, we're gonna have twen, twelve million dollars. That includes the money that we're pulling off of the grants to send it to the general fund. And so the, the numbers do not.
Most double counted, so to speak on this slide. Okay.
Yeah, you have to count for that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate the question.
And we wonder why the legislators do not understand why E S Ds, not their funding.
Or school districts.
I mean, that is why I try to find different ways to talk about this, you know, I'm trying to bring clarity to it, but if I'm being completely honest, it's not always clear to, like, it's been a lot of learning. Uh, a lot of humble, humbling and learning. Over the last two years, E S Ds are an interesting animal. And um, it's cold comfort. Uh, the other CFOs also struggle with this, you know. So like, when I meet with them at conferences like last week and, and we talk about this stuff, this is uh, something that we, it, it's. I would say it's more of a problem articulating it than it is understanding it, you know, so that hopefully also is a little bit of cold comfort. But it is, it, it's just completely different than a school district, which is why we wanted to dig into this a little bit.
Do I have a quick question about that?
Yeah.
Um, so if the nonprofits wanted to help fund a program, where does that land here?
So that would go into our special revenue fund, yeah. Because we would have to do whatever the nonprofit stipulated.
It would be restricted.
Yeah.
So, s- so, so, so what I'm thinking about, just, just to kind of be clear. Uh, is, is, is how could our local business be involved in our funding? Local nonprofit, I would imagine. And then the nonprofit would, would, would support special revenue programs?
I mean, they can always just get to the general fund.
Yeah, it's not, not, it's not.
Yeah, I mean, imagine like in the workforce space, right, where we are building something from nothing. That would go into our Fund Two Thirty One, I believe. Fund Two Thirty One, which is our workforce development fund, special revenue fund. And that's where it would land and it has strict restrictions.
They give directly, they can give very.
Yeah.
Sure they can.
Yeah, they can. Uh, most don't prefer to because the tax benefits of giving directly to government are not as good as giving to a, a nonprofit. So probably through, if there's no other um, like relevant nonprofit, then giving through our education foundation would probably be the, the best way to go.
So, so it makes sense now for us to, cause I can smell pizza, um, to stop and, while it's still somewhat warm and then have us continue. Well, does that work for everybody? And then if people need to use the restroom or?
Everybody know where it is, restroom? Everybody know where it is? Okay, sweet. Sounds good.
Alright.
Thank you.
Superintendent has asked me to keep rolling here.
Oh.
So on the, on the local service plan, um, so again, looking at it a different way, so this is not gonna tie out. Uh, this specific slide, I'm actually wanting to make a specific point with, and I will get pointed and explicit with it in just a second. So our state school fund total formula is sixty two point seven million dollars. Uh, for those, I don't know if everybody here is acquainted with the state school fund. Uh, it, it works the same for us as it does, you know, the numbers, the percentages are different. But the mechanics of it are the same for us as they are for uh, school districts, which is. Uh, there is a, the state economists estimate the total local revenue that every district in E S D in the state is going to collect. And then they add that to what the legislature has appropriated and they come out with a per pupil funding amount. And then they multiply that per pupil funding amount by the number of pupils we're expecting to serve. And that gives us our total formula revenue. And so our total formula is sixty two point seven million dollars. But we are expecting to generate sixteen point six million of that ourselves through our local taxes. So the reason I want to make a very explicit and pointed point here is because when I worked in a school district. Uh, I lived under the erroneous belief, and I believe many others do as well, that E S Ds pull money away from school districts. And the point that I'm wanting to make here is that on the last slide I showed you, of this formula, we get to keep six point two seven million. We're gonna generate sixteen point six, which means that we have generated through our taxes ten point three million dollars for our districts. That is going to go directly to them to spend how they see fit. That might be spending it with us, it might not be. But we are actually subsidizing school districts with our local tax. We are not pulling money away from school districts. That was the pointed, point I wanted to make. Um, and so. But out of that total formula uh, revenue, six, fifty six point four is going to go to the local service plan. Um, and part of that fifty six point four million is going to go to the core. And so I say twenty five percent goes to the core, but as I talked about earlier, it's not exactly twenty five percent. Twenty five percent of what the eighteen districts get from the L S P is gonna go to the core. And then four percent of Hillsborough and Beaverton's L S P money is going to go to the core. And so that's how we get to fourteen point one million total dollars available for our core.
Are those numbers Jordan negotiated with school districts when the, the percent that goes to the core from their allocation? Is that a, is there a regular look at that or is there a expectation that it's within a particular range or?
Oh, um. I'm gonna let you take that.
Yeah.
There's some history with it.
So uh, there was a time and Doug was there um, where the E S D didn't pass through any resources. Districts, they got the, they got the thing and they said, what do you guys want to do, school districts? And they come up with stuff and then the E S D would provide it. And if districts used it, great. If they didn't use it, great. But the E S D never lost a beat, right, on the finance side. There's a story, I don't know how true it is, but it involves Jim Abbott, for those of you who know that name. And he says he came to the E S D and the first thing he heard from the superintendent was that they hated it, they were pissed about it, all that kind of stuff. And so they created this model that we, that we still hold on to today, cause it has served us well. And we do talk about this as a superintendent group every year.
Okay.
Um, in the L S P process, and that is the, we hold twenty five percent back, we do collective work. And then we flow through the seventy five and you do what you want. Uh, most of them, especially the small ones, spend back with us and then some, uh, because they need the services, right? So um, Beaverton and Hillsborough in about two thousand fifteen. Um, there was a suit, and Chris knows the best about this, but there was a superintendent here that wasn't making nice enough. Um, and actually is beyond just personality. The, the, he was not respected by the large district superintendents especially. So Beaverton and Hillsborough um, got very meat, uh, upset with the E S D. Mark Haas was a representative in Beaverton, a senator in Beaverton. And he carried forward with somebody else from Salem, uh, the Salem area, a bill to opt out via fees.
Right.
Passed that bill, um, and so now districts could just take their money, um, and be like, we're done.
Okay.
And uh, the E S D board didn't much appreciate that, so they got uh. They turned, I don't know, like that superintendent left and they brought Rob Saxon and, and Ra had personal relationships with those superintendents. Kind of got them back in the door, but never back to that twenty five percent. And that, that is not going to, that's millions and millions of dollars, it's just not gonna happen. So that's why they have this kind of special little deal. But every year, September, October, with the superintendents, we, we look at this plan, reaffirm it. Um, and then that comes to you guys in December.
Okay. Earlier, uh, two slides didn't tie out because governmental accounting. Uh, I just realized right now that I made a mistake. So these two slides don't tie out because I made a mistake. Twenty five percent of fifty six point four million is fourteen point one million. But again, we don't take twenty five percent from the two largest. So the actual amount that we get as an E S D to fund our core is six point five million. So this slide is correct on what uh, our L S P core funding is. Uh, the previous slide was not correct. Um, so the. The revenue that we get from the L S P overall, if you will, uh, through the state school fund is, we have that ten percent retention of six point seven million. And then we have our L S P core, which is six point five million. Uh, the six point seven million is unrestricted, the, the ten percent we retain. The L S P core is restricted because that is voted on by our districts, what core services we're going to provide. How much of this revenue is going to go into those core services? All of that is voted by our districts. So that goes into our special revenue fund and our enterprise fund uh, to provide those services to districts. The reason, there's only a small amount that goes into the enterprise fund, it goes into the tech enterprise fund. The reason we do it that way is because Stuart and his team are communaling resources from a whole bunch of different places. To provide the highest and best value that we possibly can through economies of scale. So rather than nego, negotiating one contract for synergy, which we, I think we provide synergy in our core for eighteen districts.
Sure do.
Um, so rather than providing synergy to our eighteen districts in the core with one contract and then providing it to the other districts participating in the Cascade Tech Alliance with another contract. We negotiate one contract and then we flow through a proportional amount. Stuart does a lot of complicated math in, in uh, workbooks to figure out what the total cost of, the proportional cost to each district is for us to provide synergy. And then we need that amount off of the core into tech. So like this money, again, it just goes everywhere. It's not like. Th- this is why financial presentations are a little harder at the E S D is, cause I can't just give you discrete things, but I am trying to be as transparent as possible. Uh, to build collective understanding. So the point I'm trying to make here though, is we get thirteen point two million dollars through the L S P process. And uh, I, I think another prevailing uh, assumption that happens in school districts. Is that that is the core function of an E S D and I think we would also agree that that is. is that that is the core function of an E S D, and I think we would also agree that that is the corporate, like what E S Ds were established for was to provide this regional benefit to districts and, and, you know, to be funded through the S S F and everything else. But I also think it's really important to recognize that a hundred and seven million dollars of our revenue comes from grants and contracts. So we have thirteen point two that we get through the state's, state school fund process. And then for operating our agency, a hundred and seven million comes from other sources. So I think you can have a reasonable debate then about what like constitutes an E S D, uh, at least one of our sides. Okay, so we have some challenges and opportunities. I'll try to blow through this pretty quick and, uh, and then this slide is going to tee up Catherine's work with the board. Um, so we have this enrollment decline statewide. Uh, I'm happy to report not as much in our region. We have stabilized in our region. We're not, we're not at maintaining enrollment. We are losing. But we lost about eight hundred A D M from last year, uh, from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, out of more than a hundred thousand kids, that is a much lower rate of decline than what we're seeing statewide. There, so that's the opportunity side of it. The proportion of the state school fund that our region is getting is actually higher now than it was a few years ago. Uh, because we're retaining more of our students than the rest of the state. The challenge is, as any of you who participated in the legislative process know, is, uh, the decline that's happening statewide, there's no nuance happening in that conversation to say, oh, but the Northwest region is maintaining their students. The conversation is, we're funding education too high because we don't have as many students. And that's going to impact us the way, as much, not as much, it will impact us less because we retain that higher proportion. But we are going to experience that same, uh, decline in revenue if that conversation continues in the way that it's going. Then we have grant volatility, um. We've all experienced this very intimately over the past couple of weeks with the complete impoundment of, um, Title One C, which is our migrant education funds, and then having those funds released. And in the meantime, we're supposed to figure out if we should be operating a program or not. It's, um, grant volatility at the federal level, especially um, is, is going to be a persistent challenge. And, um, and I don't have any answers for that. It's just something that we need to be aware of. There is some state level volatility as well. So when we get an economic forecast that says that everything's going to hell in a handbasket, that's probably not the most eloquent way to say that. Um, sometimes I hear it after I say it and I apologize for that. You know, the state decides not to fund things. And then, and now we have, uh, analysts from big four accounting firms and from Fortune five hundred companies saying, oh, maybe this tariff thing is gonna work. And so, you know, maybe our economic forecast next year looks different, and now there's new funding opportunities available. And I think outdoor school is probably a great example of where we see things like that. Um, uh, there is a possibility in the short session that we can restore some funding for outdoor school if the economic forecast is better. Uh, we're halfway through a biennium. We've already had to make program changes and everything else to deal with, uh, the short funding that happened in the long session. We can't just go back and forth, you know, there is going to potentially come a point where probably Dan, maybe he asked me to have a conversation with the board about, even if the funding's there, should we spend it? Because what does this do to staff? What does it do to kids when we ramp up services and then we lay everybody off and then we ramp up again? Like, is there a stable level that we should be targeting? That's a conversation we're gonna have to have in the next couple of years. Cost pressures, five and a half in- percent increase on personnel costs. Our utilities are up more than ten percent across the board. Uh, ten percent was the lowest utility increase that we experienced this year that was on natural gas. Uh, electricity is expected to be up fourteen percent. Our insurance premiums are up twenty percent. So all of our cost drivers are going way up. You look like you have a question.
No, I don't have a question. I'm just, I'm just, I just.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Um, on federal grants, so there's a lot of executive orders that are held up in court, obviously. And there's been a lot of actions that aren't legal. I've been following a lot more in the city and county space. Are there a lot of lawsuits that local school jurisdictions are joining? Like, I know also we have a fairly aggressive A G in the state of Oregon, like, are you feeling optimistic, less optimistic about any lawsuits related to education and protecting our grants?
I've, I feel most optimistic about what our A G is doing. Uh, I don't know of any local districts in our state that are going after this on their own.
Eugene.
Oh, Eugene.
Eugene joined with a number, this is early on, joined early on with a number of districts under the A G. They're, like Eugene is kind of the A G's district.
And then my second question, obviously, there's been a lot of cost pressures during and since the pandemic. Um, to what degree are we as an E S D limited thanks to nineteen nineties tax reform? That puts limits on how much local jurisdictions can charge in taxes, like, how does that cap impact our ability? Because in a resource scarce environment where we can raise taxes, but costs are going up, how much is that limitation impacting us as a district?
I don't know that it's impacting us.
A bomb of a question. Answer it in a sentence and be like, talk to me offline, Dorian.
All right, well, let's go with that.
Okay.
Let's talk about it offline. I think Dan intervened because he knows this is something I'm deeply passionate about.
For a while, I think, uh, I mean, you know, we've been living since in early nineties in school districts under very restrictive, um, revenue circumstances. And you just have to look at the percentage that we are of the revenue of the general fund, um, to see the impact. So back then, we were about forty-five percent of the state budget. Now we're about thirty percent of the state budget. And so, and it's because the bucket has gotten, you know, smaller and health, uh, human services has gotten bigger. And you see that. That's the shortest answer I could possibly get to that.
Great. I invite anyone to send me reading and resources on that topic.
On the cost drivers, um, are majority of those local, like Northwest National, B G D?
Yeah.
They are?
With the utilities, yeah. With the insurance premiums, we buy our insurance through a cooperative that buys insurance for all school districts and community colleges in Oregon. And those, th- those increases are directly re- reflective of two primary things. One is local and one is global. On the global level, it is, um, I don't, I don't want to make this political. I'm not saying, I'm not making an assertion about what has caused climate change, but the climate is changing and it is damaging structures and properties. And so global losses uh, related to severe weather, um, and specifically on the West Coast, uh, wildfires and different things like that, uh, has direct local experience, but also global experience has proven those premiums up. And then locally, um, unfortunately, sex abuse and molestation claims, uh, at school districts are, uh, rapidly on the rise, some with more recent incidents, some where, um, uh, things that have happened decades ago are being brought to light. And these insurers are on the hook to pay those claims. If, if, if they insured us at the time that the harm was caused to a student, they have to pay the claim. And so our direct experience is driving up our premiums cost.
Let's, let's keep, let's keep it moving a little bit. We're just gonna fall behind.
So facility needs, we have deferred maintenance, no dedicated capital funding. That's not unique to us. What is unique to us is that, um, how we're allowed to spend grant money is, is restricted. And so, um, when you look at a school district trying to figure out how to plan for capital, and they have eighty to ninety percent of their budget unrestricted, that's a completely different conversation than us, where ten percent of our budget is unrestricted and we need to plan for capital needs. So, uh, so that's the quick one there. And then we're gonna go into partnership potential. Um, we have external partnerships, uh, that we are looking at to diversify revenue streams. Um, again, though, when we do that, that doesn't mean that we solve, like, diversifying our revenue is about our organizational sustainability. It does not affect any single program sustainability. So we go out and we find a partner to, uh, invest in workforce development and, and a workforce hub for the region or something like that. That's not gonna fix the E I E C S E problems. That's not gonna fix the regional inclusive services problems. So we have some, uh, potential through external partnerships to generate new revenue. Um, the internal partnerships that we have primarily with our unions is what allows us to implement, uh, those new strategies. And so, uh, with that, we're gonna segue over to Catherine to talk about.
Yeah, and, and with that, um, what is unique to the E S D, there's a lot of things that are different between K twelve and the E S D landscape. Yet our employment contracts with our licensed bargaining unit and our classified bargaining unit mirror the contracts of K twelve districts. So when we're talking about, you know, uh, special revenue funds coming in, highly specific, um, asks for those, for example, if we're, we're doing the workforce development, we hire people that have specific skills in that area that have licensure. Let's say we lose that grant or head into a different direction. We still are bound by our contract, our negotiated contract language with elimination of positions and how those positions are bumped throughout the system based on seniority. So there's a lot to weigh when we're talking about, um, these, uh, special revenue funds and the overlay of our negotiated agreement. So something to put on everybody's radar as we embark this year into, um, opening up successor bargaining for both of our licensed groups. And with that, um, we could talk to you about these slides and explain them from our point of view, but, um, to have some meaning making, we want to lead you through a protocol, and it's called the Atlas Protocol. And there's basically three, three phases. So the first phase is for you to just take a look at the graphs and not extrapolate information, but just talk about what you see. So what do you see on when we're looking at staffing and the changes over time and kind of our look ahead, what, what kinds of data do you see? So for example, I could say, well, I think this is happening, but that's gonna be for the second round. This first round is, you know, I see our operating revenue increasing from two thousand nineteen, twenty to two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. So feel free to just share out, um, things that you notice about, uh, this data set on this graph.
One thing I want to point out real quick, just because this is a really unconventional way to present data like this, is I just want to remind you all that each one of these year points is charting change to twenty nineteen, twenty, not to the year prior. So when we look at, we're up forty-nine percent, twenty-five, twenty-six, that's up forty-nine percent from twenty nineteen, twenty, not up forty-nine percent from twenty-four, twenty-five. So each of these dat- data points is plotting back to its relative change to twenty nineteen, twenty.
That is a great way to describe the data. Thank you.
Still can't ignore going twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. How much growth there was in our licensed personnel? That's, that's a huge, that's a huge jump.
Yeah, the slope of the blue line is significantly more severe than the slope of every other line.
Especially the black one.
I mean, if you just add the totals, you'll see that the total for for personnel has gone up, but the operating revenue hasn't met that. So if you just add up the totals, then it just tells the story.
Other notices about this graph, please, and these data.
Something weird happened in twenty twenty, twenty-one, and I just can't.
I do find it interesting that, um, I'm reading this right, that the staffing, um, the staffing to support the operation, so the administrative and probably classified staff to a large extent has been relatively flat. Um, and the licensed staff, so evidently providing more services or potentially more services, right, has, has outpaced all of that. So just, I think, putting what I would think with, with that and the financial piece, putting a lot more extra burden on the operation as a whole business.
That's great. You are really kind of moving into the next phase as far as taking what you see on the, on the graph and then interpreting, interpreting that as far as potential impacts to the agency. So let's go into that phase. And, um, are there other interpretations that you all have in, in looking at this? What story is this telling you?
I guess for me, the, that is programmatic shifts that emphasized, um, educators with the rapid growth. Obviously, the, the money didn't flow the same way, right, but, and the trending's different, but that's what I see. And so, of course, then I start thinking about the programs and how the expansion of the, um, intentions, strategies, designs have added, so, and sadly, uh, declined as well.
It looks like, if, if, if you look at twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, you know, revenue was, like the revenue change outpaced everything, COVID, right? Yeah, and it seems like we created kind of a new standard at COVID. But then, but, but then the revenue didn't follow that, or the revenue growth didn't follow that. However, cost of living and everything else kept on moving. Um, that, that's, that's a story that I see here.
No, you can also share.
Well, I just think that was really to the point, is that like, this, this, this is an F T E graph. This doesn't tell us anything about the pressures our staff have on, on the income they're receiving through this. It doesn't say anything about how much we spend on each of these F T E. You know, and so there is missing data when you're trying to fill in, uh, to fill out a story. I think what's not there is, isn't important to call out what is there.
Yeah, because it looks like you had to staff up in order to handle the pressures of COVID. And then the money didn't grow at that pace.
It, it would be interesting to me to compare two school districts of, uh, the licensure versus the classified, because that is something that, you know, school districts talk about all the time. And when we, when the Esser money came through, picking that lane of what to use with that Esser money um, and where those supports were needed, but knowing all along that Esser had a, an expir- expiration date on it. Um, so I'm, I'm wondering if those, if this is, if these would correlate with, uh, our, our, um, school districts in our E S D.
Another wondering I have is how flat the admin line is, given that there's been an increase in, uh, in at least in licensed staff. I think oftentimes a point of pride for some governments is keeping administrative staff low, but those are so important and moving the resources needed and supporting people in their jobs. And so it makes me suspicious where that pink line has landed. It seems too low, but I don't know.
I'll, I'll think back on that, because I think about the number of contracts we have. Contract monitoring compliance, I mean, the more special funds you're getting, you should be increasing that back down.
There's, uh, another very large revenue source in the state that shifted during that ramp up time, which was in the Student Success Act. There was a commitment in those first few years to early learning that then fell off. And they certainly back out, uh, commitment in the general fund and supplanting of the state, uh, the Student Success Act monies, which is a really big chunk of revenue in the for those of you who are kind of newer in the education side, but, uh, and so what happened was this rug got at that time, this rug got pulled out from under us as we were scaling up a new way to deliver services at the E S D. Um, which was like a vision for inclusion and it just took more resources. And so, um, we overstaffed based on what was the best program at the time that we felt strongly about. And then the rug got pulled out at the same exact time.
Yeah, like, when, when, when you look at twenty-three, twenty-four, you look at the blue and the gray lines, in the commercial world, you would expect that the F T, that the, you know, F T E decreased because of automation or some like that, you know, like sometimes efficiency was gained. You've had no such thing. So, so you just have fewer people, but the need has not changed. The, the, the need has gone up, so you have, you know, you have all this work split between fewer people now. That means that people are stressed more. That, that.
Well, you're talking about the administrators and the classified?
Well, so at first, I'm looking at licensed and classified, but if I'm looking at administrators, I'm looking at twenty-one. I'm looking at twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three where you kept flat, but the rest of the organization grew. And then I'm thinking about the pressure on admin during those nerves.
Well, we heard all along that whenever you went, the caseload, I mean, you have the same amount of people, but the caseload that they are. Taking and what kind of things have to be, you're just, you know, it's just like when you have someone in your staff leave. That work doesn't go away just because someone in your staff leaves, it means you, it goes on somebody else.
There's just another aha, and I know we're probably doing too many. Uh, when I look at the decline in the last two years on the license side. Just know that our enrollment in our largest program has gone up in early childhood special education. Over that time, so our enrollment has gone up significantly in those two years.
This is a super obvious grounding question, but to take a step back. From a HR perspective, can you define the categorizations of licensed? Classified and admin and give us some examples of job titles that fall in each of those categories.
So uh our licensed group is anything that requires a professional license by the state. So that would be. Classroom teachers, speech language pathologists, physical therapists, occupational therapists. Um, school psychologists, that's kind of that that bucket. Classified staff are any um. Any position that inherently in the job title does not require a license. We have the good fortune in our agency. We have a lot of. Classified staff that do have professional licenses, but not necessarily uh required in in for that position. So. Uh instructional assistants or teachers assistants, administrative assistant staff, so office type work, our technology. Uh, team falls under the classified group. Um, Jordan's Hall Department, most of your department um falls under classified, so that's a very. Big catchall for a lot of different uh job types. And then um our administrative group is our supervisory group, so. Um, building principals, um program administrators, um service center administrators. Uh, that defines that group. HR directors. Superintendents. Let's go to the next one. Okay, we gotta wrap it up. Okay, so let's um. Any um. Ahahas from what other of your colleagues shared that you hadn't hadn't thought through in in looking at this, at this data. And we can just quickly skip over this part of the protocol, but anything anyone wants to call out as far as like, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Isn't that better than just us telling you what's on the graph? You can really create the meaning for yourself. So we'll go to the next slide. And um, this is a slightly different way to represent uh information about the staffing. So you can see. How uh the percentages by those employee types uh have changed over time. So again, we don't have the uh, don't have that revenue line there, but just a different uh look at at similar data. And then this last graph um is is just the staffing changes over time and the look ahead. And I think a point to make. This is new. Okay, so let's take a minute, let's. Yeah, let's take a minute to look at this. So what do you, what do you notice in 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 this graph? I'm gonna tell you what I see. It's a bunch of blurry.
So are these numbers of FTE?
And these are just discrete data points, so like not comparing to a prior year or anything. It's just. In twenty nineteen twenty, we had two hundred and twenty-four point six licensed FTE. And in this budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, we have three fifty-eight.
There are two ways to think about this, though. Is is against the, is against the need and it's been done by fewer people. But the other side of the argument is, well, the previous grant showed revenue. Now, revenue's been split between fewer people. So. You gotta, I mean, there's two sides to this, to this one. I think that the the second argument called the called the argument, meaning hey, look, like we like. Like we went to bargain, cost of cost of living went up, so we had to pay more, so now we just have fewer people. And the need hasn't changed, uh fewer people doing more work.
Dan always loves it when I say this, well, I'll say it here, like my my tagline in bargaining is we can pay more people or we can pay people more. Like those are. Those are the options.
That's not, we won't accept. How much, how much of the question, how much of the decline in staffing is due to. Increasing costs overall versus the EIECS contract.
I don't have the number in front of me. I did that analysis during bargaining and I and I feel like, like. I I put out what it was for the overall contract and then how much of that was attributable to.
Well, when we can't remember, I thought it was in the twenties.
Let's say twenty, you know, that's the average of fourteen and twenty-six. It was, it was somewhere around twenty FTE more that we had to cut. Um, as a result. It was fourteen license equivalent, but we we did it across multiple groups. And so it ended up being twenty-six FTE that we had.
As opposed to the number that was just a program cut because the funding went away. But what is that number?
So it was, we cut eighty FTE from the budget and um twenty-six of that was attributable to the. Uh, to the bargaining alone.
I just, so 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 I just want to put out your 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 average span of control is like one to twelve. Which which means that, hey, look, how many, on average, how many people are managers supervising? Right? In the corporate world, that should be between four to seven. I mean, like, and especially whenever you're dealing with like highly talented people who, you know, are able to like kind of manage their own schedules and things like that. Then you can go up to eight, nine. This is like one to twelve. This is, this, this is wild. This is, this is, this is wild.
So we kind of rushed through this a little bit, um, just because of the time on the meeting and we're going to also skip the scenario that. That uh I wanted to practice through. Uh, but first of all, you should close out the protocol. My apologies. I should not have just like.
No, I think um uh it's great for you to just kind of dig in and and look at those, look at that data and determine. For your, making your own meaning as far as what's on the on those slides and implications for us. Moving forward and, you know, anytime we negotiate contracts, it really all boils down to time and money. And so you can see that data clearly reflected here. And decisions that we've, we've made over time um because of budget constraints and then also uh the people that are working for us, so.
I do hope we'll have opportunities to do this in the future, uh if the board found it valuable. Um, I I'm always trying to. Share a story with data, uh and going through a protocol like this helps me know. What you all are seeing, because that helps me see the data differently, which is really important. Uh, but it also lets me know if I'm communicating effectively, so uh hopefully.
This is so much fun. Please do it like this again.
That's great to hear. Uh, okay, so. The the last part of the presentation, I'm just going to really like shrink down. The the and and I won't bury the lead. The idea that I wanted to. Bring to the board is that in a school district, the budget process is used as a um, a strategic planning process. Like, we have so much unrestricted resources. This is where we are going to hash out what our values are. What's gonna uh go to the classroom, what's going to go to athletics, what's going to go to extracurriculars, like. It's it's all like this value judgment aspect of of the process. In an ESD, um, I think we need to think of our budget more as an implementation tool rather than a strategic planning tool. And so the the scenario I was going to have you go through is a local benefactor wants to give us money. And they say they will fund the program for three years. And um, in that three years. This this is programming that some of our school districts already do, so we're going to be in competition with our school districts. Some of our districts say they want us to do it. Some of the districts say they want to retain local control. But by taking this money, we would save our districts collectively two million dollars a year for three years. After that, there would be no cost savings. But there would be a lower operational burden on our districts because we now have it as part of our LSP. What does the board want to do? Uh, is this, is this a contract? Is this a grant that the board wants to accept? And um, and, you know, the hope was we would have some discussion around like, are are we stepping on to, like, what's our role with districts? Uh, what's our risk if we stand up this program and the districts decide not to fund it after the three years of this grant towards funding? Because part of the stipulation was that we have to fund it for another seven years after the funding goes away. That's one of the grantor stipulations. And so, but, so this is, this this was the conversation that I wanted us to have because as a board. In an ESD setting, where your opportunity for exercising power and influence is really on the contracts we accept. Once you take this, so hypothetically speaking, the board accepts this contract. It's a great opportunity, seventeen out of twenty districts, one, I don't know, we're going to make things up. And so the board decides to take it. Well, at that point, I need the appropriations, like the budget process is where you give me permission to spend money. And so if we then get to the budget process and now we want to have a whole debate about whether or not we're going to do this program. I have a contract I've signed with an outside agency, an outside entity, and now I have to go back to that grantor and say. I can't take your money because my board won't give me permission to spend it. Uh, and then explain the complicated appropriations process of governmental accounting and then they hate government anymore and, you know, all these different kinds of things. And so. The budget process is what is is the process we go through to share with the board. This is the money we expect to come in. This is the service portfolio we are intending to deliver. And so this is how we plan to do it. We're going to do this much of it with staff. We're going to do this much of it with contractors and then we have this non-personnel spending we have to do for different things like utilities and insurance. So that we have buildings for our staff to deliver these services in. Um, but that is what the budget is, is like, how do we implement the things that the board has already. Agreed to do and committed to do for our community. Uh, so really kind of flipping the script or our mindset around. Where is strategic planning happening versus where is implementation happening?
And when I was reading through your scenario, not that it's a direct comparison, but I was thinking. We kind of went through that exercise of invest investing in Antlock. We, we decided as a board, that was work that we wanted to do. And we did not have a guarantee from. The process that that money was going to come with that. But we we took that, we made that decision. Um, and you had to ask for the appropriation and we had to keep going. So I I saw that as as kind of being the same kind of scenario that we.
Well, for me, you you know, the aha of that whole exercise to me, Dan, you say it all the time, influence or control, right? And as you talked about, I mean, Student Success Act, Corporate Activity Tax, I mean, I think we really believed. Kids in the margin, all that work was going to move forward in this spectacular way. And districts were already kind of grabbing from sides. COVID hits, so what an indirect huge hit. The ESD took as more districts pulled money back and we had invested in a program we believed was the right thing for kids. And then all of a sudden it got jerked. So then I feel like it goes back to, as a board, how do you look at risk? Where are we influencing? Where do we control? We control the capital asset person, but so- something like that, which should be core. To what we deliver, at the end of the day. It's gone. So I mean, it's not, but anyway, so I really appreciate the exercise because it really drove that how unique ESDs are in what they get to. Influence or control.
I could just quickly say this happens all the time, the superintendent meetings. We have, I mean, this type of thing, you get one or two superintendents that are really excited about a program and try to push it down everybody else's throat without. Really understanding where everybody is. We used to go through that all the time.
We're dealing with it right now. So look, board, I put this in one of my communications to y'all, but. We are dealing with this right now in Columbia County. Superintendent's Columbia County for apparently for decades, right? I've been asking the ESD to stand up a social emotional learning school for kids with extreme high needs because the kids are too far away from. That kind of programming, right? So we do collective work, we actually sign agreements together. They allocate money from the local service plan to do it. We build it. District budgets fell apart this year and now they're like, we can't open that second classroom. Our whole model financially depends on the revenue from that second classroom. Right? And it's brand new and it's hard to open a new program for the hardest kids in your entire county. So it's very difficult to sustain people in that, right? So this is a micro program of this macro problem. So um, now, should we be doing that work? I don't know, like I've been in in this too long, you know, like the idea of sustainability with governmental dollars just doesn't like strike me as. Um, that possible, like I want to do the best work we can possibly do at the time. And that requires that when the rug gets pulled out from over under you, you're going to have to go through some painful cuts. Um, and you try to temper that with some legitimate reserves, right, but. You know, if you asked me again two years ago, like, would you do that again? Yeah, I think we would still do it and we're just just got to keep working at it, but.
And the the piece with this that I think sort of saves us in a lot of ways is when we design the program, we put in that. Counties would get an allocation every year from the ESD for specific programs that they wanted to see within their county. It's not a lot, it's something, but it's not a lot, but it does give those counties and every county has done it over the years. You've invested in specific programs. That no other county does, but you think that's important to your county and it's very worthwhile. And so I think that's been a a big plus in the whole picture.
Yeah, and that's how we're saving our bacon right now, because the county, they agree, like, we're going to use that money to backfill the second thing, so we're. Okay for the year, but eventually we're going to have to actually fund that thing.
Well, I appreciate you guys doing this, putting it together. Thank you so much. So uh, ma'am chair, how about we get five minute stretch here?
You're walking us through this? All right.
I got the, I got the rest to show, I think. Okay, so um, just real briefly, uh, these work agreements, but you might notice like the last line in the. He said the red documents is that we commit that each year, we review these annually. Um, so this is an annual review. Uh, there is more recommended changes in this one than I have done in quite some time. Um, it is almost exclusively around the public comment. Um, section and how the uh the end organ is. The, I'll walk you through some of that, uh, but before I get into the details of that, I do want to give people an opportunity just to raise. Um, their voice around these that they find are either challenging um. Or lost or had been handled and for us, you know, things that they appreciate from these documents before we get into the the changes. Um, in one last uh level set here, um, these documents, I created these three documents from. The A and B policies that the board adopts, right? So these are cross-referenced from the policy that you all have. Um, I did this actually initially in Hood River when I went there. It was a real community. Uh, outcry that this year was really a bad financial situation. They had lost money and the board was entertaining. Like people were screaming from the audience and they would answer the questions. It was like that kind of circuito and I'm like, ah. So I did this work to collect things that we read the desk and kind of helped that board. Quite honestly, and and the administration back on track. That's where these things kind of needed from and we just kind of carried them over, but these do come from our agency. Um, so with that, uh, are there things that people want to just voice around these? And if not, that's fine, we have a lot of catch-ups too. So um like if these are working for us, then thank you.
I like having them stated uh in look and coming from one of those kind of weird meeting situations sometimes.
Um I would, I think it's good to have these in writing.
For those of you who've been around to some other boards' meetings in our region, you might see these in about seven or eight schools.
Yes.
I thought some of that.
And maybe even some college.
Yeah, I I think it'd be interesting because we are not here, but just staying it upfront and not borrowing any sort of thing. It is interesting to see um when I had discussions about why working agreements and why people understand the role that the superintendent has, the role that board members have and staying in our lane and the governance versus operations is true. But when you violate these working agreements, somebody said, well, why even bother to have them? What what enforcement do you have? And it that was an interesting sort of thing is that you have an agreement with somebody. We agree how we're going to conduct our business and how we're going to work with one another. Um just so simply that it's that it's spelled out. I have never been in a place, um whether it be on a nonprofit board that I'm on or here where somebody has, if somebody has veered off in some sort of way, usually the board chair or somebody you know, takes aside and tries to tries to handle that. But I've never been in a place where it's really been put to a test. So I just wondered if we had any, i- if if we know that that something's in violation of our working agreement, what is what is our, what is our protocol? What is our process?
Okay. So we have been put to the test um with that particular thing here at the E S D. Um and uh that's where we clarified in these documents, the role of the board chair and vice chair. Um so if if the, yeah, so uh and it's right in the first document, authority of the of the chair or um I'm gonna find it, but basically the basically the requirement is an inter- is a private intervention um of the chair to let the member know that they have violated the working agreements that you all will hopefully adopt. Um these at our next meeting after this review. Um the uh the actual like penalty, like you can't kick somebody off this board, right? Unless they no longer qualify for the board because they moved out of the region or they no longer work in a business in the region or you know, those types of things. I would say the way that boards function best is when somebody's violating the they they don't have any power as an individual board member. Like the only power you all have is by a majority vote to really affect anything. And so typically what happens in those times, especially if it's just one person, is that they make a motion and nobody seconds it. Right? Or you know, they just don't, they're just not not able to bring the other board members along. And typically they get frustrated and leave a board. But there isn't a penalty like uh usually as we've seen in other communities. Unsatisfactory answer.
No, no, it's no, it's not. I just think it needs to be stated because we've got so many people questioning it now. I just think it needs to be stated. I mean, i- it's, you know, it's like H O A things or something. I mean, you you can say you sign up on the H O A thing, but if you decide to, you know, uh you know, how many times can you go tell them to mow their lawn or whatever? You're not, you're not gonna remove them from their home, right? I mean, so it's i- i- it's a civility, it's a whole sort of thing. I just think it's being in the news a lot more and that we just need to to recognize it for for what it is. It's a working agreement amongst us as board members with with the superintendent.
It is under, there's a section called accountability under the su- board superintendent operating agreements. It just spells that out, but it there isn't like the penalty, yeah. So if we're okay, um I would like to just point your attention to a couple of uh things here on the, in the uh agreements for board meetings, work sessions and executive sessions. You'll see some strikeouts. The first is we have not called out the consent agenda in that box there as a place where the board makes decisions that is a place on our agenda where you do uh pass, you know, vote on things. So we just add that in as a hot piece of housekeeping. Um but most of this is all about the public comment. And what I have done here is I've taken basically Beaverton School District's public comment process and applied most of that to our changes, to these changes here. What we're seeing across meetings in multiple districts and at other E S Ds is kind of the, we're gonna blow your meeting up for two hours and do public comment for two hours on the same subject, over and over and over. So this puts a time limit. We have never, and we've never experienced that at our E S D. So I'll just say that, like, that's hasn't been our, uh I think that's happened here. But this puts a thirty minute limit on that agenda item. People can still submit things in writing and all that kind of stuff. So you're not like, you know, not hearing people, but it does limit that public comment section to thirty minutes unless the board chair decides that they're gonna extend that time. Um there's always the power of the board chair to do that. So that's one. The other here is the other tangible um tangible one is going from three minutes to two minutes. That is another thing that Beaverton does. They are very strict on the time. Um and uh as Becky knows, but I've been to a bunch of those meetings, like there's a timer and it goes, right? And then beep, uh it goes off and you're done. I do think that regardless if we go to two minutes from three, um I am gonna ask the board to and maybe put on the vice chair um to be the timekeeper. Uh because like we've had a couple that went went a little long um and to and it sets a precedent, right? Like um for folks. So those are the major cha- those are really the only substantive changes. The rest are like, how do you turn in a comment card? Like who does that kind of stuff? And that's very similar. It's just kind of wordsmithing what we've already done. But those are the two substantive changes. Any discussion on that? Sorry, there's one more substantive change and won't be for the board, but we did require that people state their address. And in this day and age, don't want it. So we're just gonna do what, you know, county and city you're in, just know that they're in our region or not and that that'll be it. That's.
Not right. I don't think we, I don't remember us reinforcing.
No, we haven't. Not hearing any major concerns here. Okay, I'm gonna bring this back to you all for vote at our next uh meeting, will probably be on the consent agenda. Okay, all right. Onward, my goals. Um so I just had my, you know, retreat, my quote unquote retreat is another work session uh with the cabinet team. And um I gently remind them that uh my goals become their goals. Uh and we tie, and I do make sure that I tie my goals to the strategic plan, right? So we're not having like, you know, a whole separate set of uh of actions happening. So uh when I put mine together, just know I'm going through the strategic plan, I'm taking the things. But also I know the board in in the past has been like, Dan, you can't do nineteen goals, right? But I do have significant leadership and we are very diverse, like um portafolioed system. So I do need to have my executives have very clear direction in those portfolio assignments. So this is a tool that I that I use with with them. So I'm happy to take any questions about the about the proposal.
Andrew, you heard um in the visual earlier from the uh strategic planning, where we have um strategy in those go-to department action plans?
Yes.
You remember earlier when I was asking like, where is the tactical layer? This is closer to the tactical layer.
Yeah.
So I think this is kind of missing from that visualization. Just, just like that.
Yeah, the I think what I'm gonna do on the side, I'll send you like a copy of an action plan for departments. I think it gets very much like this with sets of, it's very tactical. So I'll send you that and we can have a conversation offline. But yes.
And when I say tactic, I'm actually using like an industry term. That actually doesn't mean that you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're back to nomenclature.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Yeah. Okay. I'm just gonna wait for a sec. I see people are still studying the doc. Alrighty, um appreciate that. You know, I I did put uh there were a couple of updates from the reflections that I gave you in the spring because the spring was the spring and data keeps rolling in. You'll still see on that second document that we still don't have our state data. And to somebody's question earlier, is this E S D data, is the district data? We really, because we're collecting data from twenty different school districts that have different systems for collecting data, it can be quite a lag. The biggest problem we have with that is Beaverton. All the other districts give us um, we have a data agreement with them and we pull directly from their data systems on student uh level data. Beaverton is much more protective of their data with us and they do release it, it just takes more process. So things can lag a little bit. I was happy to just report very quickly because Saint Helens, you know, was an interesting job for us uh this winter. And um they did not, if you recall, vote on the L S P. Um like they, the in that, all that turmoil, the superintendent didn't wanna put the E S D vote on and we didn't need it to actually pass the L S P. After, that was Karen Gray, um interim, after about a month, uh she did put it on and did a lot of work with that board on the value of the E S D and they voted unanimously. And all that mess, they voted unanimously to support our L S P. So that came in later, so that's in here too, just so you know.
Yeah, we have, we have.
Yes.
Um so the rest of this is probably gonna be all of the values. But for these goals, um do you think of them as like, you know, like highlighted by like, by like each potential or by each value in our, in our all values covered? Is that how you think about it?
Ye- yes, uh um I would say we're gonna get more in line with that as we get this new plan designed. They are more in line with our collective commitment structure, like equity and anti-racism structure, cultural revolting, teaching structure, not partnership, et cetera. I would say, I mean, everything is reflected there. I think the one thing that will be more reflective in the future is around our innovation strategies. Like we're trying to get to be, to think a lot more like an enterprise um unit rather than a governmental unit. So I think that's where we'll see some more growth.
Well, so on that, you know, the um it it it, I know you're already doing it, but um but like what we experienced with bargaining, what Portland has experienced with bargaining. I know you're trying to, you know, trying to, you know, kind of make sure that we have like a common level of perception um on kind of both sides of the table, so to speak. Um I don't know if you could state that as a goal, cause like what metric would you put it through, I suppose? Um but just wanted to just highlight that that's probably something that you're thinking about or we all, I know you said as much, so.
Yeah. I think that is in, I we did reflect, I tried to reflect some of that in goal four under thirteen. Which is really a communication goal within the bargaining context, just to not let things fester and the kind of thing. That's kind of how I was trying to get after that.
Okay. How do you distribute that typically?
We have a meeting, uh we have a two-day meeting scheduled with the Employee Relations Board with our association and leadership. Um that's gonna focus a lot on labor management and how we solve problems together. Um but we are gonna talk about interest-based bargaining processes and whether that might work for us. And within that context, I think we'll have a lot of conversations about how we wanna move forward together, hopefully.
Yeah, great.
Okay, um this will come back to you again at our next, your next meeting. Relatedly, um your board goals, so um you know, I take the liberty of evaluating you um because you do that to me sometimes. So I uh, no, I um I just put a couple of slides together, very basic data here for the board. Last year you had four goals um represented here. So your first goal, this is not, I'm just, first goal um is around your participation in ad hoc groups, committees, uh et cetera. You know, you all did a great job um showing up in different ways, um in the best ways that you could in different committees. And I think it's a strength of the board. Um so I appreciate that. Uh the second one is uh around the strategic plan work. And that's actually a self-goal for me to you because I make sure that that happens. Um but it is important, right? These are, these are the ways that you make sure that we're delivering on our promises. Um ninety percent attendance rate, you just missed the goal. Um and.
Two percentage points.
Just missed the goal. Um and.
Significant figure if you put that, that should round up.
I considered it, I considered it.
It's a two-digit goal and you can't have the measurement, you can't, you can't have.
Okay, okay, we'll show it.
Met, all right, met at ninety percent, met at ninety percent. No, uh it's hard, like you miss, basically what this is, is if you miss more than one meeting, you're done, right? Like that's just, but that's how, not how much we meet. So if you miss two, right, that's just the way it is and and things come up. Um I feel, I feel pretty good about where you guys are at. I think you should too. Um and then our working agreements. And so we usually have a discussion like we just did, um and that kind of satisfies that goal. Um I took the liberty after looking at that and having, you know, some talks with Becky around some things. Here are some proposed goals for your uh for your consideration for the board. Again, uh distributed leadership goal around committees, et cetera, uh attendance goal. I want uh to focus you on strategic plan adoption rather than monitoring uh this year. So we can um get that done and be off to a new start on a plan. Um the board will settle collective bargaining agreements. Uh that demonstrates commitment to fair and just workplace, protecting services to children and families. Um and the E S D's financial operational integrity and sustainability. So that's the needle that we're trying to thread, right? Shang ral la. Uh and the board will recommit itself to excellence in governance through the adoption, ongoing commitment to our working agreement. So we will do this again next year and make sure we're on target with the, with with our work.
So I'd like to just take a pause here. Um because there aren't too many things, um because I I had the opportunity to um to speak to quite a few of you over the summer, you know, um chatted with you about what kind of things you see going forward. So I wanna make sure that there is a time, someplace here, because it's not actually in the agenda anywhere, that that this maybe is good a time to see there is what, what kind of work are the things that you want to get accomplished reflected? And does it need to be reflected in a goal or does it need to be reflected? So I, you know, I was, I was thinking, um and I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just trying to think of the other things that we do. Is it, is it important um as a goal for a board um that we attend? Not just these, that that we have a place at the table at the O A E E S D or, but that we attend the the O S V A Fall Con- Conference? Is it, is it important um that we have board members attend the spring E S D conference? Is is that something of value? Does it, does it make us a better board? Or is it just, is it just fluff? Or is it something that that we should be looking at and just trying to to um do? Is it important that we put in a goal that we say we have relationships with legislators? Is, is that, is that, is that? I I just think this is the time to maybe for us to explore. What is it that we think that we could? And what I've, I said to almost all is, I don't think anything is broken at the E S D. I don't think there's anything that is, you know, absolutely needs to be fixed at the, anything like that. But I always believe that there is room to make ourselves better. And I I think I mentioned a couple, I want people around the state to. And I, I think I mentioned a couple, I want people around the state to think that the place where we should all try to be attained to, we should all be like Northwest Regional E S D. And not just from having a great superintendent and having a phenomenal staff, which we know we do, but it should be from the board standpoint, that people try to emulate and, and practice what I would, I would like to be in, in that seat. That's where I would like to go. I know that's not a measurement on a goal, but that's just kind of a, a personal, but how, what does, what does, I don't, I don't want it to be what I think it looks like. I want it to be what we as a board think that looks like. Dorian.
I like, um, what you're mentioning about conferences, because I think when we have in-person time together, I've learned a lot more than when we're with each other virtually. I also want to respect and honor that, like, spending multiple days and traveling for a conference is a lot. So rather than saying it'd be a goal of like 100% attendance at that conference, maybe we say at least 50% of the board is represented at that conference, Andy, or something like that.
Yeah, that could become an equity issue.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, yeah, no, no, we
Well, it's paid.
But, but still the time, yeah, yeah.
Everybody can do that.
No, no, no. So that, so it may not be a measurement, but is it some, if, if you never encourage or call it out, you're never going to, to get, so.
So, I don't know, 50%? 75%?
So last year, oh, go ahead, Doug, I'm sorry.
Well, the other way to do it, there are lots of ways to do it, but, um, that each board member goes to one of three, if there, I know there are at least two, uh, OSBA conferences or, or Northwest Regional, or not North, uh, O A E S D conferences.
So last year, um, I believe there were five board members who went to O A E S D.
We went to the one in Portland, the one in
Right, right, right. Okay, so we had four. And, uh, I think it was a good, I think you guys got something up. I think, I think you did. I guess a, a really good opportunity to see if we're actually a high-performing E S D or not. Unlike school district conferences, right? There's 197. You can, you can't go to 197 different presentations with honors. You can kind of tell what's going on. It, it made me really proud to have a number of board members at the meeting because I believe so much that we are by far the best E S D in the state. Um, I, I see that right in the microphone. Um, so, uh, but it is also a huge investment and quite honestly, um, we have a big board. So nine people going to, uh, you know, a conference is also an expense in the district. So just putting that out there as well.
Because part of me feels like, going back to the why, why, why are we going? Is there an opportunity that we create, uh, more times of community, right? So intentional at a, uh, in-person meeting that we set aside time for dinner. And so we're connecting that way. Because I agree, Dorian, that's the best time when we're having dinner together and chatting. I mean, you know, after many, many years, um, I, in this path, I don't know that I'm looking to go to another OSBA conference that's not got the O A E S D day, or just to go to the spring conference. It's just not a priority for me. I'm sure there's a ton of things I could still learn, but it won't be. And that's spending professional dollars for the Northwest Regional E S D that I'm not right now, not prioritizing. But I like the idea of how do we learn from each other? How do we spend time together? Those are all good things.
Another one that play into that is also legislative days and things that happen down in Salem or working with legislators at a local, more local level. But I think all of those sort of play into it.
So I'm wondering, rather than it being a goal, if there's just some way we could record or acknowledge the fact that, and again, I know I do this with my hat of representing Washington County legislative policy, so it's not just through E S D, but you've got to know every single time I do any of these things, they know very well that I'm part of an E S D and I am speaking from an E S D. But I, I just think it, we could reflect of, you know, we go to this many town hall meetings or that we go to this many legislative days or, um, just as, as it's, it's part of our, our work. So if, if, if people don't think it should be reflected in a goal, I absolutely you know, respect that. Because I don't know how that, if you put something as a goal, you have to measure it. And I'm not quite sure how you would, how you would measure it, so.
But then I also wonder, I mean, Dan, we get whether it's the student cafe summit, if that's right. But you all do amazing opportunities for us to maybe it's afternoon, right? Or a morning, so you're not investing a full day or having to travel a ton. So, um, I, I, is it, you know, that 90% of us have attended at least one legislative professional development opportunity? Because that would be different than, but then recognizing that that's not going to be perfect for everybody, or I don't know. And we can still like just track it, but I also don't want to feel that there's like, oh, here's this list.
Yeah. And I don't want to put anymore because I know just attending a monthly meeting is, is, is a lot. I don't want to, I don't want anybody, but I also think, um, it's taken me a while to even, you know, now going into year three, to even figure out all the extra opportunities there even are being on, on, on the E S D. So maybe if, maybe it's an informal sort of thing that we, we put together a little, these are all the, uh, uh, other opportunities. And then, then folks can plan accordingly that they know the conferences on May whatever, uh, the OSBA conference and, you know, if they have, oh, if they have the E S D day again, that's the day before, or they, oh, they won't.
They only do that on the long session.
Only during the long session. Okay. So there you go.
Makes sense.
But like, there's OSBA conference next week and they're begging people to go because they're not getting a very good turnout. And I, you know, Flack got called out as a legislative policy, why aren't you going to be there? And I said, I don't want the cost to be plus, it's usually for new board members and it's not a good use of two days of my, my time. But they're also trying to get it, veterans are spending time with, you know, new, you know, I totally, I totally get. But if we had maybe just a list of these are the other opportunities that we can have. And then we know at that board meeting that month, we could say, hey, because I know you usually mentioned this, you, the summit or the whatever, but, and then, and then, you know, we just kind of, oh, we had three of us there, we had two of us there, but not make it on top of all the other things that you're doing.
Having it be a report, I mean, being explicit about that being part of the report out at the, when the last thing in the agenda. That might makes, that would set a precedent after we should talk about that stuff.
Yeah. Board member comments at the end of the meeting. I went to the cafe summit, you know, that kind of thing.
Yep.
Well, I, I have something I want to call out specifically because, um, I think there's kind of three things at play here and I don't know if this is the right venue, so I'm just trying to find the right venue. I don't, I don't know where it's at yet. But we have our goals here. Um, we have superintendent goals, we have this, we, we have the strategy. And there's something that I just not see in the room for it. So, um, so here in, in our ge- in our geographical territory, so to speak, we have Nike, we have Intel, we have Techtronics, we have, we, we have all these big players here where no other E S D in the state have. Right? I mean, I mean, I mean, I, we have some type of strategic advantage. We also have the local business seat here, right? So I'm thinking, hey, look, so how can we create a bridge? For funding opportunities? Or involvement opportunities? How, how does this look? And then where do they fit in? Right? And, and I don't know, like, I don't know, like, where they specifically fit in. So if Nike wanted to write a million dollar check, right? Like where does it go?
Goldman.
So I'm saying, so where does it fit, right? And I even had to ask before I even talked to Jordan about that. I say, hey, look, so, so like, where would like an enterprise funder fit? And he said, well, it would fit here, right? I said, well, according to our definition, it don't fit in that definition. And he said, oh, you're right, they don't, right? So, 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 so I'm just trying to find, is this the venue? Is it, is it, should it be a goal for us to, you know, create these relationships or is it a committee level thing? And I, and then I look at the committee structure, I don't see the committee structure opportunity for it. So I'm just trying, so I'm just trying to find, yeah, where is that thing?
Be the, uh, liaison position for the foundation, working on corporate sponsorship opportunities for donations for the foundation. Rather than having that as a board goal, I might suggest that whomever gets assignment, which I know it's in your supporters, Chris, that Chris more mindfully partner with the business seat and have that be some of the corporate responsibilities is how I would, is the first thing that comes to my mind.
Because I guess, I mean, if the goal, Ernest is completely financial, right? I just want a big old million dollar check. I'll even take a hundred thousand. Then I think that's one thing. If it's workforce development, investment in programs, which is real dollars, then to me, that's part of Adam's plan as he starts to really develop what his work looks like in this region. So then it becomes operational and I would hope would be part of our strategic plan that, you know, as you start to develop out.
It would also be legislative alignment. Their government relations.
Oh, sure. Yes.
It could, it like, like, like it could show its face in a lot of ways.
Yeah. And I love the fresh lens because this shows where I'm old and jaded and for so many years, Nike was pretty much maybe about Beaverton, maybe about Portland, but it, it was very
School district.
Yeah, I mean, T T S D had a snowball's chance and getting a check like that. So then you get tired of asking. So you walk away. So I don't want to discourage it. It's just past experience wasn't. But the E S D represents a much broader community.
And our cause, our cause is, I mean, how could you say no? Our cause, we have the most vulnerable children. You can.
As somebody who has to fundraise for a youth homeless services nonprofit, I recommend we take this conversation offline because
Okay.
Well, I think folks at this table are very used to getting a lot of no's for things that one might think are really important.
I do, I do think where we can fit, because you're asking, you're asking kind of a essential question about the business seat. Right? Like, which is like, where can the business seat actually do business, right?
Yeah, yeah, right.
And so, and so, yeah, right, like, um, and I do think that this key initiative that we have just kicked off around workforce development is a place where education and business comes together, like peanut butter and chocolate, you know, or whatever that is. And, uh, and I think we can scale up. Like, I think we can, with, with Adam's work and your connections, I think we can kind of scale up on that, on that front and give it a tangible thing, not just like, hey, we need to raise money for our foundations. Our foundation is primarily teacher grants. That's not very sexy, like for, uh, for, you know, an investment from Nike, right? Workforce development and getting our youth workforce ready and connected and internships.
I can see that return on investment.
Yeah. So I think that's
Say, Dan, I mean, yes, foundation focuses on grant for teachers. We have a whole process for that. But we are available as a pass-through for grants from 501(c). Because we are 501(c)(3), we can take a we can take a grant and pass it through.
Take that million dollar check.
Yeah, yeah. Make it their write-off and
It has to get, the E S D board would have to approve it and they always ask, is it in line with our mission and all that stuff? But, um, that is, that is another function that the foundation could serve.
Yeah.
Should it be a goal then, or, or the two orgs to have a closer relationship?
Again, how would you, how would you measure it?
Do, can I ask a question? Do the two seats that are industry-specific, so the social services seat and the business community seat, are those roles adequately defined? Like, do the two of you understand what your function and opportunities tap in?
I read to
Sorry.
At large, you're just like, whatever.
Point of actually, these are our border-wide goals, but given that we have three specialized seats, is it need to be their job description or a specific goal for each of those three seats?
Those are, I hear you. I, I think we can wind it really tight, you know what I mean? And I think there's a way to just like, we got to look for the right opportunities because Ernest might come with a certain skillset that our last business person didn't come with. And it is hard actually to fill these board positions historically. I know. Um, it's
It was highly competitive when I applied.
Except for secondary, not a lot. It actually hasn't been recently, but historically I think it is, it has not been easy.
It's been the pillow of my president as long as I've been on the board, so he's the third one.
And the, and the, the other thing just that we need to know is like the roles, because our E S D functions as a pilot E S D in the law. Don't, don't even, that's a whole nother thing, but we are called out as one of three E S D's that are structured like this. It is statutory. So like your role is actually in statute.
Yeah.
So I think that's a place for, for us to think about like what it is. But it won't say like, and you should go raise funds from Nike, right? Like, um, but I think we've got enough, I, I don't know if you want us to be a board goal, that's up to y'all, but like getting you connected more into this workforce development and we're really at ground zero, right? We're just trying to figure out who the right partners are right now.
Maybe we're learning, we just need to spend more face-to-face time together so that people can pollinate.
And, and I also, I, so, because I want to, I want to make sure we, if we want to make any change to the goals, we want to do, we have to do it now because we're going to be voting on it next time around. I also think this dovetails really into, because I hear a lot of the things that are being said here. And I'm wondering if we can address some of these things in our next conversation, which is about committees. Because I just hear all of these different things that maybe we can address kind of more, because again, if we make something a goal, I'm not, you just have to be able to measure it. You have to be able to measure it and, 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 and own it. Um, and so, uh, I, in all of this, what I flushed out here, I did, I do not think I hear anybody say attending outside things should be a goal. It should be something we discuss and we can address at monthly meetings, but I didn't hear anybody say it should become a goal. Does anybody have any problem with any of the five goals that are up there now? Any additions, deletions?
I think it's good to add the one about negotiations, that's a change.
Yeah.
How are we going to measure goal, goal four? You said it has to be measurable.
You're going to settle the contract.
Yeah, so, a year from now, we're going to say we have
Ratified contract.
Yeah.
Ratified contract has been signed.
Because we could be here a year from now, maybe not have it. And that, we'll, we'll not have that goal.
This says that we've
Fine adopting these as is. I like the idea of ensuring that our agenda is half that little space at the end for community happening.
We just don't, we are still
We can, we can make that more proactive sort of ways with the, um, so, yeah.
I would just say I'm comfortable and not only am I comfortable, but I think five holes is a good amount. I think it can become goal-heavy. And that, that can be a risk and then we start ourselves in the loop too then. So, I mean, ideally goal one will be pretty easy. And goal two, you know, kind of, that's us doing our jobs. But either way, I feel good about having five holes. This year's going to go fast.
Well, just between negotiations and the strategic plan, those are two big things that we're adding to. Um, so with, with that, I think we're, I'm, I, do I kind of hear without voting, yes, we're going to vote on them actually at the next board meeting, but, uh, we're good, that we are ready to go right on to committees because I think that could be someplace where we can maybe do some tweaking.
Right. Well, let's do it.
Okay.
Board committees, so, um, we've been tracking this for a while. I gave you a short view here, but we've got this since 2019. And, uh, give you a little Um, and, uh, give you a little historical for the last two years. Um, we sent a survey out. We tried to get everybody their first choice. Um, and if you didn't get your first choice, I called you Paul. Um, because there was just some, there was just some holes, right? So, uh, there was a survey, uh, that you all filled out. A lot of people, well, four people wanted negotiations as their first, uh, actually three people as their first choice.
You.
Um, and, uh, everybody wants a piece of the superintendent eval apparently. There was a lot of first choices on that one. So. So this is what the best I could do with the information I, I had. Uh, one, uh, place in this is why, uh, I had to call Paul. Um, Maureen, I don't even know if I checked in with you on this, but, um, is on the O A E S D Legislative Council Representative. That's actually not our board's decision.
Right.
So O A E S D is a official vote, like there's a nomination process and then boards of E S D's vote on membership. So yours, your term's not up.
Because it's a two-year term.
Yeah.
There you go. Like, yeah, I remember that. Cause you have to submit.
It's kind of like legislative policy or anything.
Yeah.
Like two years.
Yeah. Well, there you go.
Yeah. All right. So we're good.
Thank you for, so I should know that. So I'm going to throw out there just to get this conversation going is I made a note early on today here. And just having this conversation with just five. Um, and, and again, I'm going to go back with the, the individual conversations that I had with several of you. What I loved is everybody saying, I'll do whatever needs to be done. Where, wherever I need to be plugged in and, and I love that as a part of, of a board. That everybody is so willing to, to, to step in. Um, also being very cognizant of the fact that we're all busy people and we've all got lots on our plates and that kind of thing. But I, you know, I, I thank you for that. Um, but when you have so many people, what was also shared with me is there's not a whole lot of choices here. You know, either you, you, you feel good with being a part of the audit committee or you don't. Or, or, you know, the super, you know, so what I'd like to start, I, I think there is a need to add a committee. And the committee that I would, that I'm going to throw out there is I'd like to see there be a committee on the workforce readiness. And we can incorporate this strategy of finance. We are have, we have a new staff member that's going to be focused on that. Now again, I know, you know, Dan, I know it means extra work for this person. We may be into something. But what we said earlier today is when we do something around here, you just need to bring us along. And I think there are some things that we were talking about this morning. That if we had, if we were looking at things at the committee level and that, um, maybe we even cook into the agenda. Like every other month or something, that we have reports out from those committees that are meeting on a month. The policy committee is, is another one that we, then you're, we're bringing the board along. We have board representation doing this work there. So you're getting their input there. And then you're, you're reporting back to the board on this committee level, and then you're bringing us along. So I, I just think right now with taking on this new initiative and it's going to be so important that that could be maybe something that we look at. And add that as a committee. So I'm just, I'm throwing that out there and just seeing what you guys think.
I'm curious, is this a brand new idea or is this something that like staff were already aware of?
This is a brand new, I'm taken Dan totally by surprise. Based on, uh, and I can tell by the way he's jumping up and down that he's really.
My gut punch is.
Well, this isn't a real board meeting, so we don't.
No.
Had to be more in Dan's seat and as a staffer, it is a lot of staff capacity and coordination to run a committee and run a committee well. And I ponder if perhaps we say, okay, in this upcoming year, the board, as a board goal. We will evaluate whether we have the right committees, if some need to be removed or added. So that staff feel like they're co collaborating and have more of a longer runway before starting a new committee. That's my personal view and that's my bias as somebody who has worked in government administration. Um, you know, I also wonder if that staff member, you know, would they be enthusiastic to take this on? When we know that we're kind of a lean organization? I, I have some, uh, I like the idea. I want to jump up and down, but it, it gives me some hesitation. But I also would, you know, Dan, your, your staff, what do you think?
Um, so I think I would make a slightly different recommendation that also gets after the conversation we just had. The only reason I'm hesitant is because it is so brand new and he is going to be very, very busy trying to even get the right people. And each of these four counties together, that having another structural committee, because he's got to put four together this year. Uh, in these county groups is going to be a lot of coordination work. So I'm a little bit reticent on that. What I would maybe recommend instead, as we're building that. Is to look at this audit R F P committee, because quite honestly, that meets once a year and it's like that goose is cooked. Right? Like you're basically making sure that the auditor, that they're work and that you understand. I mean, you know, it's an autopsy of all autopsy reports. Right? So, um, what, it's important, but it's done. Um, so what I would recommend is we actually turn that into a finance committee that also deals with the audit. And that means that we're meeting more frequently about the ins and outs of our budget, where we have enterprise opportunities. What's actually happening with all this money that Jordan just shared is coming in a hundred and twenty different things. And actually have Jordan facilitate a monthly finance committee.
And, and Jordan, I mean, one thing is we have one fewer committees than we did last year because we have the, the bonds oversight committee, which George.
Yeah, he's going to be fully bored.
No, he's going to make, uh, roasting coffee.
So, um, so, um, I already run a finance committee at Portland Community College. I'm, I'd be a trigger on that one. And I can go ahead and tell you now exactly what you're going to face. It's hard to keep people on, on the committee. It's hard to get people excited about accounting, you know, being very, very performative. It is. Former corporate CFO here right now. Uh, so, so I'm right with you. Um. What's, what, 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 what benefit are we trying to get from it though?
Uh, I think broad.
Uh, this, besides visibility.
Yeah, I think the, a couple of, I could think of a couple of goals. They are not going to be as sexy and new as like a massive workforce development, regional work plan. But it would be things like, um, making sure that we are actually managing our resources. So that we hit our end of year goals. And the board has an end of year goal around that you just told me was going to be good around our ending fund balance. Also in the context of negotiations, like that's a money conversation within limited resources with a goal of a 10% any fund balance. Or whatever we just put in there, nine or 10. So like that would be a body of the work to track that. We don't, you know, in a board meeting, you have the monthly financial report. It's very brief. Um, it's for people who want to make sure that they understand that at a higher level. And I think there is an opportunity in that to talk about, especially in a agency like ours, like what the opportunity costs are. Um, for new programming. I think those are probably the three, three things.
So Ernest, I mean, I'm also curious, um, that if you told Jordan, okay, we want to design a finance committee. That accomplishes the audit, you know, oversight, but like, and what's different is we're not going to have like a two or three hundred million dollar bond. Right? Because it, T T S D financial oversight, also along with bond oversight, really looked at the investment strategies behind that kind of money. So you really were kind of, you know, discussing, um, uh, policies and all those things around investing in that. But I do, I, I so appreciate how Jordan looks at things differently. And so I think there could be some creative, interesting opportunities on where are some of the gaps and how do we measure risk? When we look at contracts, you know, what are the questions the board members are asking to get at that at long-term investment? How do we think about when we approve a contract? Does it look right? Da, da, da. Or are we thinking more strategically about the financial impact? So I guess I'm willing to try with Jordan and, you know, Dan with you to think, what is the purpose of this? What's our why? How do we impact in a positive way? The future of, um, our financial, uh, sustainability. So I don't know.
The other thing it can accomplish, and I've done this in my prior district is you have, and you have a seat for the associations. So they actually understand the money at a much deeper level.
So, so, so what you're saying, okay, so you're, so you're looking at this like, hey, look, let's get transparency. And a, and a common understanding. So when things get rough bargaining, so we're, we, we already have a common, we already have a common understanding. There was already a seat at the table. That sounds wise. I, I totally agree with that. Because if we get into that rough situation, you would have wished that you had.
Yeah.
That transparency at that point.
Yeah.
That's back to the layer of.
But there's still the issue. Well, keep in mind, so I, I feel like I have to speak from the seat. Um. There's, there's, I still don't see a seat at the table for business. And, and, and again, we have. These players in our backyard. Why is there not a seat at table for, for?
Which table?
Our table. Just like, or, 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 so why is there, so if we have fun needs. And we have these big old rich players. And our.
So. Um, I, I think I would just, I'm not trying to throw cold water over having a fundraising committee. Um, I would just ask that the foundation, like I think the conversation is a foundation conversation. Like we are a government quasi governmental at best, right? Like so, and I'll just tell you from my shared experience with Maureen, much less of what she had to do and tiger. When you are not Beaverton School District with Nike, like Beaverton, they, Nike does give money to Beaverton. They don't give it to, to anybody else. I don't even know how much they actually give anymore. Intel Hillsborough, right? They give, they already give to the Hillsborough School District. So you get into zero sum games with your school districts, some politics there.
It's on B E F though. Uh, and, um, the Beef's Education Foundation. You would think that they would be a bigger player.
Right.
Right?
So resident Gen C millennial board member. What we're actually, the problem we're actually trying to solve is that education is chronically underfunded. We're not going to solve that with a fundraising committee or begging and pleading Nike or whatever else. Frankly, this, I bet you every single person at this table has either served on a finance committee or run finance committees. We have some of the best fundraiser fundraisers in the state of Oregon on this board. Like, I don't think we're going to solve this, the state of education in the United States by going to Nike. Like, I don't think that this is the time or the place to be having this conversation. Like there are so many more bigger fish to fry. I think we're getting a little off the rails.
So do you think the foundation is a place to have that conversation?
So to get back to, to, when I look at these, uh, committees, and again, these are the superintendents committees. That we as board members serve on it and we do that because that's the, if you have committees done in a different way. They have to fall under a, you know, all the pubs. So this, these are the superintendents committees. So that's why it's, it's, it's.
Except for the equity, the board equity policy committee is an advisory to the board, which is public meetings. It's noticed, it's online, it's all that stuff and everything else.
Okay. Um, I look at these committees of, uh, I, I break them down into what are our functions as a, as a governance? What kind of things do we, we have to answer for, you know, that we have good financial standing? Um, that policies, those are our policies, those are our board policies. That is very important work. We're the ones that sign the negotiation with our, that is, that is board, that is board work. Our, one of our main functions is of hiring, firing and evaluating a superintendent.
Retaining.
Retaining, sorry, sorry. I'm just saying in the bigger picture, not individually, but that's, that is the number one fu- function retainings are, are any superintendent. And then these other ones are more that we have representation from the board to these important organizations. Um. So again, going back to, I, I, Dorian, I so appreciated your feedback and Dan, I appreciated your feedback. And I knew I was throwing something out there, but, but I was just reacting to what was being said. And so that'd be, no, no, absolutely. I think you made a very good point and people didn't jump, you know, so I, I always take silence. As compliance and, and so no one else, so I, I point well taken and we can evaluate, uh, again, at another time. So now going back to, does anybody have any problem with what is up there? Cause again, we're going to adopt this, uh, next time. We're gonna have to come to a bottom line on finance. I will tell you right now, and I know we talked about it both ways, whether we needed to have two representatives. Uh, on each of our negotiations, whether it be classified or certified. Right now there's four people, so I'm assuming that we are looking at two people on each. I need to remove myself because I have taken on.
Too much time.
Commitments that are going, that have to meet every month. And I just know there's going to be a conflict and this is way too important that someone that takes us on needs to participate. And I. And, and so I.
Can I be for?
Yes.
I, I appreciate you saying that back in. I, um, that's exactly the thing. You guys, this is not, this, this will take a lot of time. And there is no phoning it in. There's no, this isn't a virtual thing. This is, you gotta be there. Um, it's just the way it's going to be, right? Like, so you just have to know that that's happening that way.
It's best for two people. I'd like to remove myself and prioritize the equity committee. I fully trust Michelle and Chris.
We don't need two board, we, we really don't need two board members on each one of these. We really need one. There was just a lot of interest in the survey.
You really need, I think you need two people because of continuity. Cause there are going to be times when somebody can't be there, when you have meetings all the time and you need this.
You're talking about just the negotiations or all?
Just, just the negotiation.
Right. So right now there's four.
There's two, two groups, two groups. We have classified and certified.
Oh, right. Oh, I see.
So the idea was two people on classified, two people on licensed. We're trying to, having, we're having conversations with, um, O S C A are classified to move that earlier. So they mo- might not overlap. So you could have two and you do it all year.
And as long as I have a backup for those times when I'm taking those trips. Because I can't be there in person all the time, but I'm, I'm okay doing that. That's why.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, if you guys are okay with doing negotiations all year and whatever that looks like, that's what I'm hearing.
So what, again, I want to get to a bottom line here, bottom line.
Yes.
I, I'm removing my name. Dorian, are you removing your name?
I think so, although would it make Chris and Michelle more comfortable listing me as an alternate?
But I think if you're not.
Yeah, that's fair.
Cause of the continuity. I mean, at, at least in my experience.
Let's, I'm, I'll remove myself and, and, yep.
Okay. So, but the folks that have done this before are saying that those of you that have done it before. Uh, are saying that, you know, if someone gets sick or whatever, you, you want to be able that somebody, it's covered by somebody.
It has to be.
So.
So.
These two, I think what I'm hearing, um, Chair Tim Chucky.
Yes.
Is that, um, these two will do both licensed and classified and they will back each other up and be there as much as they can, you know, as much as they can. And, um. If it, because we're hopefully going to be doing one group before the other. If it's too much, we can always come back.
Okay.
And say, we're going to need to add somebody here.
All right. I got, okay. That, thank you for, and thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. We are, I don't know what kind of award we're going to give you. It's going to be. Not just the time, but, uh, so, okay, now.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that like you two are weak. I'm not saying that, but you put so much load on one committee right now. I like. Why do we put that much load on two people? Why do we put that much load on two people?
To make that time commitment, when we don't even know what that time commitment even looks like.
I will tell you what it's gonna look like. I mean, at the minimum, it is gonna be multiple evenings, many, many hours. Many, many times a year, so. Um, we're talking every, every two weeks typically. For at least three to four hours. And then as you get closer to settlement, it gets more detail oriented and it extends. We end up meeting hats and rugs and carpets and eating together, and it's a lot of being together in a room, but you are not. That's what you're doing, right? Like you're.
Can we, um. Maybe since we're sort of unsure of, of how many people we need. Maybe we can see, cause you're gonna be having to put this together sometime in the fairly near future. Dates, times, that. Maybe you see what it looks like then and we say, oh, no, 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 okay.
And, 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 as soon, if we've done this before, so, so, I mean, a lot of us have done it. So that's what come I knew to remove myself, because I know, but. I could be that person, once we know the schedules and it does not conflict with these other things that I have to be at. Then, uh, you know, I could maybe be that, is when we know what that, what that.
So.
Schedule's gonna be.
May I, um, I, I would love for that to, I'm just looking at the count, at the schedule here and the time. Um, and not that time's everything, but. Um, I would propose to you that we have these, these two. Let's get a schedule together, classify it, hopefully we'll be first. You don't want more than two anyway on this committee. So we'll run with that for a while and we'll see how it goes. And we can come back and discuss what the licensed bargain would look like.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think then we will know. Then we'll know, and it, it does make a difference. When you've had somebody who's been close to the negotiations in the past, that they can pick. I mean, they're not gonna be speaking directly anyway, they're gonna be representing the board. And so having, if we decide we need the third person to fill in. It makes a lot of sense then, to me.
Okay, so the next order of business, cause we need to keep moving on, is, is the finance. The finance piece here.
Would you like to have, it doesn't have to be monthly, it could be like every two months, or we can figure it out. Would we like to make the audit crew? A little bit broader. Is that important to the board? It hasn't been in the past, I'm just saying, so.
So in this case. Michelle, you're on both.
If it's gonna go up to a monthly.
So, well. Well, but one of the reasons that we said is, is to provide transparency. So that when you get into negotiations, you, like, you have information, right? You, you have the data.
The district team will have the data anyway.
Jordan's already doing.
Oh, yeah.
Mira, would you be willing to step into that one?
I would be happy.
The finance. Okay, well, then we'll, we'll keep you where. You don't, just two is fine, okay. Okay, Maureen and Ernest, stay on finance audit. And the other thing I was gonna see if there was at all any interest in. Since you've been so passionate about. How we have revenue and how we get business to the table, would you be interested in, in being. A second person as the foundation representative, so you see how money is, is, is raised there.
Instead of the finance committee?
Uh, well. No, I just, I just wanna give you the option because you're, you still didn't see how business fit into that finance thing, so, and.
Would be a big change.
But.
Is that a good or bad thing? The big change, is it? I mean, like, good in terms of, like.
I mean, you know, I think. That the foundation is a longstanding group that has a particular.
Idea.
Project that they work on and we certainly, I mean, we do have an annual fundraiser and if we could get. Folks from. More businesses to come to our fundraiser and raise their paddles, that would help.
Well, you can always go to foundation meeting and check it out. You know, before you sign up.
Okay, so. Okay, I will, so we have, we've made the adjustments and they've been so noted.
I got.
Okay, and we will then, uh, so is there any other, any other discussion with this? Okay. All right.
Okay.
You, you explained to Jordan, I, I would have been happy to be on there.
I will make sure he knows you didn't, it's not a personal thing. So, um, each year I try to put together a roadmap, this really helps my staff, um, by the way, more than it helps the board. Um, so they know about when they have things that they're gonna be in public, uh, with the board on. Um, so hopefully you got a chance to take a look at that. My big question, is there any big thing that's missing? And you'll notice, we try to keep it to two presentations per month, because three. Ends up being a long time, uh, it, it, the, and the meetings end up being very, very long, so.
Um, at the April eighth meeting until look, I would love to, uh, host us at our, in our new facility. For the.
Yes.
For the help, uh, nursing lab, EMT labs.
Yes.
New boardroom. Sound good?
That sounds great.
I mean, I'm assuming it's done by.
Would, would the May twenty twenty six meeting, the budget committee meeting that, for the hearing, would that change? To. Finance?
No, that's the, that would be the official budget.
Meeting.
Meeting with like, to meet, with all the committee members that we do each year.
But, yeah, okay, got you, okay, yeah, you're right.
So Dan, my only question, maybe I missed, read the earlier slides about the strategic planning update. I thought that was November, but. So it's October. Um, so my comment about bringing us along the way, I mean, if you're presenting in early October. Maybe another check in at, at the beginning of December or, I, I mean, I'm just trying to be mindful of the time. Um, but to not have nothing between October eighth and January. But maybe something before that doesn't make sense. I don't know.
Does it make more sense to do something like flip in October and November?
So you're just saying, again, just no update between now and till November?
I will give you an update every month.
Okay.
About what's going on with strategic plan process. That's what I heard was in my superintendent reports to make sure that you guys are up to date. On what's happening, on my public ones.
Okay.
Each month, and then we'd have like, kind of these presentations.
If you think, Dan, that having, cause that's our only presentation prior to the completed plan. I just wanna make sure it's that sweet spot, that you've collected enough good data, really kinda have a sense of the framework. So that makes me wonder if, I mean, October's badly, not that far away.
No. Let's, let's move, let's.
I don't know, what do you guys think, am I flipping hairs or?
No, I, I, again, you're, like you said, it's, it's hard to find that sweet spot with that, and it really is, um, cause we wanna be. Here's what I think, because it is so important, just like negotiations, it's such an important part of what it is that we do, if. In your monthly reports. Anybody speaks up that has a problem of where is this going or why are we doing this or whatever? Then it can easily be something that is added to.
Yeah.
The agenda.
Okay.
You will not vote on this, by the way. This is just total informational.
Okay.
We're not gonna put this in stone, things change all the time, we have to flip reports, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I add a note for staff? Um, I, you know, we have a lot of heritage months and celebrations. Um, I, I don't know which ones we picked to celebrate versus not. Um, this can be at a, a question to be answered at a future date, but I'll just note that Disability Pride Month is July. And also Arab Heritage Month is, uh, April. Uh, I would be interested in adding those two as resolutions potentially, um, but happy to.
I think we do a decent, neurodiversity in March.
Right, but I'm, uh, beyond just neurodiversity, disability pride more broadly.
Shoot me a note.
I will.
On those, and I'll talk to Luar. Basically, they, I mean, the real work here, I mean, obviously the board stuff is. The culmination, but the real work is doing this in community with, and so the more we add, it's just, you know. And then you do get into, my group's not here, but your group is, and we've dealt with some of that in the past, it, it can get a little gnarly.
Yeah. That's a curiosity.
Send it to me and I'll have a conversation with Luar about what's possible in the community.
Maybe that's equity policy committee.
Any others? Okay. I'm Jared, moving on. And I've made some notes for changes. Lastly, before we take a little break here and reset the meeting time. Uh, is our organizational structure and chart. And so, uh, heard you all loud and clear in my last evaluation, um, and. You know, I, I know I joke around a, a bit about it and, um. Megan is out, Kelsey is out, I just dealt with the, and I'm dealing with stuff. And I was like, you know, I really need somebody. And I've never gotten to that place before. Um, so, uh, this chart does, just reflects what is, um, right now. Um, there is, uh, there is, I'm gonna just say to the board that throughout this year. Um, I'm, I heard you, I'm gonna be looking at, uh, deputy or assistant superintendent type position. Um, but not, but everything can't stay in the exact boxes and with the lines if that occurs. So, um, I am cons- considering it strongly. And, uh, moving forward with some different kind of recruitment conversations. Uh, I will need to revamp this, right? Um, with that, it, it just can't stay the way it is, obviously, you had a position like that. Um, the one, uh, position that's TBD, uh, there is a legislative affairs position. Um, I'm also asking the board to give me flexibility there. Um, in the past, I've had that be a chief of staff position. Um, it is like the people who have worked in the Capitol for a long time doing this work, like. A lot of them don't wanna work in the Capitol anymore, um, like, I've had a couple of conversations with. People who have done it for a long time, they're like, I am looking to do something else. Uh, so I'm not sure how that structure of that position comes along. Um, so I'm just asking for flexibility, but it's in our budget, like, there is a legislative. Affairs position that has been in our budget, was in our budget last year and I didn't fill it. Uh, because we got Lori, Lori Satin-Spiel over to OA ESD, if you recall, and I just thought it was best for us to work through the organization. Um, it's a short session, it's probably a good time to spread our wings a little bit and try to get somebody on. Uh, so, just a little bit of flexibility around this chart and the way it's structured. But you generally see the structure, right? Like, I've got chiefs, um, Megan's got EDs. Uh, I have most of the senior directors, we have Brian Payne, who you met earlier, works under Megan, because. He's really mostly not on the operational data side, he's on the academic program and student data side. So he works under, under Megan directly. And, uh, right now I got all of them, um, under me, so there's your one to twelve. But it's short term. And I actually, uh, actually I'd love to have a conversation with you about, um, a move I'm making on one to ones. So I'll, I'll kick that around with you, but it's just too much, like, I can't do twelve one to ones every other week, right? Like, that's just not gonna happen. So, um. Any questions about this or, um, comments? Oh, oh, the last thing, I did put this in the slide, actually. Oh, look at that. So I just wanna point out some new folks, we've got Adam, who we've talked a lot about today. Uh, in, uh, workforce development, uh, Robbie Davis is, and you met her last, uh, spring online. Robbie is our new director of special education, K twelve special education under Kathy, she came from Portland Public Schools most recently. Um, we have Catherine and Yolanda, these different color boxes mean they were with us and they've moved into new positions. Catherine went to, from director to chief, Yolanda went from administrator level, like, quote unquote, you know. Talent administrator to Catherine's old position as director. So that's that shift, and the last shift is temporary, which is Megan and Kelsey are out. So, um. Uh, Tracy Goldner works under Kelsey, she's our communications manager, she's been with the ESD for a long time. Her dad was like a career thirty year ESD guy, and she is helping me with lots of stuff, but we. You know, we definitely don't have the communication capacity that we had, and we won't for a couple more months. Um, so we just have to know that that's what it is, and, and work our, work hard on it, but. Those are two holes. Okay, with that, any, any questions or comments on the structure?
I, just for the record, I would also say. When we're looking at that. Legislative, I, I do think there's always room for, I, I don't even know if you want, but. More of a, uh, just keeping the trains, you know, somebody that's helping you just help keep the trains, even if it's non. Official capacity, cause the legislature isn't always in session, so what else that job could possibly do? But I also think, um, as we're moving into this new avenue of, um. Workforce readiness and we're gonna do the county by county, I think you need to see that it's not just. Government affairs is about the legislature and money, it is also about getting to know the county organizations, in some cases knowing cities. And who all the players are, and Adam is going to have his hands full just doing the program. It, it should be also a hand in hand that this person is also opening those doors and getting to know who all those players are.
Yes, yeah, a governmental organization's position and chief of staff.
Yeah, whatever. Cause chief of staff can be, can be defined in a lot of different, in a lot of different ways, so.
All right. Well, um, I believe, oh, TBD, I believe that that concludes. The work session.
I, I've got one other little piece that I told board members that we would, I would bring up, and there was no place that it fit right away. Um, I heard from some folks about, I just wanna have the conversation so that we're all aware of this. Um, about how we go about choosing whether we're on Zoom or we're in person. And what. Night of the week and how we meet, um, Valerie's already sent out, we already approved the calendar. Uh, it, but it's, again, having that discussion of how we determine. Um, we don't always know if we're gonna have an executive session, um, but we've kind of baked that in, especially with negotiations. Being we pretty much know that we'll probably have executive session, everything. So we have, so anyway, people wanted to know about the start time. And when we decide that we're at, at, at someplace else, and then also, you know, how we go about choosing the week. So I would, I just, I, I, I said that I would, we would have that discussion, so if anybody. Have some thoughts about that, that they'd like to bring up to the group, so we can have that discussion, this is, I wanna provide that opportunity.
So I'm, I'm one of them to talk to Becky about the, uh, meetings and, um, of course. I, I like having meetings in person, I totally understand. For many reasons about, you know, having some remote meetings and I understand about the mountain over the hill. Um. I, I'd like to suggest that that March time be more flexible, that if the weather's good. You can get over the hill, or we can come this way if that's one of the things we need to do on that, those days, but. I think that having five meetings virtual is, uh, is a long time for me. So, I, I really would like to see that, I think we've had great interaction here with this group and. I think it's first time we've ever all been together in nine months. I think it's first time we've ever all been together in nine months, at least maybe ten. Um, so. So there's my statement. So at least question in March. I was, I thought when I got on this board that it was said November, December, January, February was gonna be those four. And so then when I saw March was remote, I'm like going, it is? Are you sure? In fact, I think I called somebody. So. There we are.
So is the proposal on the table to move, to change the March meeting to in person? And keep all of the, keep all of the other virtual and in person as if.
Well, I'm just throwing out that I, I understand the need for some remote. I, it's more of a discussion without a.
Support you. I really like being in person. I think we live all over the place.
Yeah.
So I, I think for the five, March is here nor there, but I think
Yeah.
Other March, other months besides March, like I, I don't have any folks who need to drive from, I'm privileged to live in Hillsborough. Like that's where we have infrastructure. Um, but for the ones that are in person, it would be great if we could be in person.
I also think having it either everybody remote or everybody in person is better.
Yeah, I agree with you.
If, as, as, as long as meetings are on, are on, uh, Wednesdays, I'm always gonna be virtual. That's, that, that's just how much it was. So if we're meeting on Wednesday, I'm gonna be virtual.
Is there a, a, any, any interest, even though I know we've adopted the calendar, is there any interest in, in it? If, you know, it got moved to another day, do you think you could make it in person? I mean, I, again, none of us can look ahead and know, you know, what, what, every single time.
Wednesday the only day where, okay. But then there's sleep council.
Yeah. I'm Tuesday every night and, yeah, yeah.
And then when you start getting into like Thursdays or Mondays, so many of the holidays fall on those and then you gotta work around, you know, those. Um, so I think, you know, so many boards kind of do that Tuesday or Wednesday and, and then if you've got kids and, you know, schools and we are involved at, you know, Thursdays, in sports or play, I mean, there's just never a perfect, there's just never, never is. Uh, so then, then you just hope that, that, you know.
Just remember in Tiger, this is so small stakes. In Tiger, we went from Thursdays to Mondays when I was staff. And all I could think about is Monday Night Football and what I was listening to. It was like, what's just happened? I lost Monday Night Football.
Or, or, or it was always, it was the night of the national natty. It was the night of the whatever. And so, you know, there'd be a couple of us that were following stuff on our phones because it was a Monday night that we had. But we heard the feedback from staff that Monday nights were so hard with the board book getting Monday night.
You just, you just crush your week out.
Yeah.
It's just really a very, you have a very late night. It's not like kids stop, don't come on Tuesday morning, you know? So like, it just gets very difficult.
Well, at least it is, at least for this board, it's one night a month.
True.
So is there any, any other thing? I, I, like I said, I just wanted to, to circle back and make sure that we have and, and
Thank you.
We, we hear, we hear and, you know, as we get closer.
Can I make a, just a recommendation to the board for like next steps on this page? So, um, one is, I don't think we can, I personally wouldn't want to change from Wednesday this year. I totally hear you. Think we can have kind of more of a, like, let's get a survey out in the middle of the year to the board about the next year and what would work for people. And re, and rethink about the days, the day of the week, the, um, the March meeting, the, I believe the board calendar is on the consent agenda for, for today. I think we have a revised one. So what I would recommend is when Becky says, are there any review or is there a review or revision of the agenda that you would make a motion to move that item to action items off the consent? Then we can move it off consent. We're gonna have this conversation. I think making the motion to have the March meeting be an in-person meeting and, um, I think it's, it's great. And then if we have to do virtual, we just do, we just do it because the weather's really bad.
The weather's bad on Tuesday?
Yeah. No. So it does, it does take that kind of, because we had one meeting, we were supposed to come to Tillamook and we changed it at the last minute, even though it was in the calendar that we were in person, but we made that call that it was best not to, with the weather. So.
Districts do this all the time, right? Like the weather's bad, you have a meeting online now. It's just that we're regional, so our district is big, right? But we can move a meeting online if we have to. It's still the meetings posted and.
But I mean, as far as taking this off of consent and moving it to an action item, we need to do it because it's the reverse here. We're talking about taking a meeting right now in the calendar that says it's by Zoom.
Yeah.
And we were, we're talking about maybe moving it to in person.
Yeah. So you would just make the motion and then you guys can vote and it can be five to four or whatever.
Then don't stick with it.
Yep. So that's all right?
Yep.
Okay. Well, um, thank you guys for the work session. Um, it's, 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 this is, I, like I said to my staff yesterday, I look forward to it. This is like the meeting I most look forward to with the board. Um, and, uh, I just really appreciate you all making the trip and, um, and being committed to, to the ESD. So thank you.
All right. So we are adjourning the work session and I'll give another, let's have another five minute break, uh, and then we'll start our, uh, our record.